Okay, it is 7:02 PM on February 22nd, 2018. This is the Rundle Planning Board. Let me start with a roll call.
Yay, Marty.
Tom McGinn, James Lowry.
Chip Bassett.
Rich Canom, Tad Ridwick, Planner.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, first item of business is, I don't know. Not answering that phone call. First item of business is approval of the minutes for December 2nd and January 25th.
Don't we have to approve the agenda first?
I'm sorry. First thing is approving the agenda. I was thinking about that. Okay, so first item is approving the agenda. Are there any amendments, additions, or deletions from the agenda? Do we have, first off, do we have a forum of the people present? I don't think we do. We don't have a forum for either of them.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do.
For February 8th, there were four out of, the four of us are here. Chip, myself, Marty, and Tom.
Okay. And also for the 22nd, then it should be four of us too, in December. Good. Okay. All right, good.
I'll make a motion where you approve the minutes. I mean, approve the agenda.
All those, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. What carries unanimously? Okay. Now, we've made the best approval of minutes for December 2nd and January 25th and February 8th. Do we have any comments, questions, concerns?
Do one at a time.
Yeah. Why don't we start with the oldest one, December 2nd?
It was well presented, let's put it that way.
Was, the minutes the same? I thought I saw something that they were tabled last week.
Yep.
Because we have a forum.
So what I had in my notes, I was wondering if it was because of the date on the.
The date was.
So that's been corrected? Okay. Any, I haven't seen a revised copy. Any other changes to the notes?
I think it's in the packet. It's an electronic packet.
I didn't have a chance to print them all.
I actually did.
There are three out of the five of us, so we have a forum.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Were there?
I was second with debate. Fair enough.
Sure.
So my question would be, was there any other changes other than the date?
That was the only change, the date.
Applicant was very informational, sort of his plans and everything else.
That was the capable K9.
Yes.
That's.
Oh, that's the one I, okay, I wasn't there.
Which one are we looking at?
December 2nd.
The capable K9 out of 111.
Across the street from.
I wasn't there.
Across the street from Kate's butter.
Right, Jamie took the notes. Took the, took the minutes.
Just given the bearings.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, if Jamie, if Marty wasn't there and I wasn't there.
I was, Marty. Marty, Jamie, and I were there.
Okay, I have no other questions.
All in favor? Yay. That's left out to the. All right.
Way to keep it moving, Marty.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Abstain.
Okay.
That's cool.
That's, that's three.
That's right. Three, three out of the five, we have the majority.
Okay. Okay.
February 8th?
No, January 25th.
January 25th, please.
I actually had a correction on that.
Oh.
I knew this after I printed it.
I'm sorry. Okay.
You have to have it.
The corrections, I will move that.
Um, in the approval of the agenda section, I have motion, Mr. Kane motions to approve the minutes with the change in the order, and it's the agenda, not minutes.
Oh.
And we need to work on our file naming so that I can, I don't have copies of these.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I do not have a copy of them. I didn't print a copy.
You are here.
Oh. Yes, I was here.
On January 25th?
Yes.
Yes, he was.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I wasn't here from February. I do have a copy.
Okay, is there any, any discussion of January 25th? Do I have a motion?
Yep.
Okay, motion is seconded, and so all those in favor of approval?
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
And one extension?
You even asked them to print now because I can't read the first of that.
Okay. Four ayes, nice, I abstain. Okay. Now we have some minutes for February 8th.
Move to approve.
Two seconds.
Okay, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? Nope.
I have a comment.
And we did have applicants come back afterwards, and one of the proposed buyers stated that he thanked us for doing our due diligence. That was either in the meeting or after the meeting.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be part of the minutes because it wasn't an official discussion.
Okay. I'm just saying it was a comment that was made.
It was on tape.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but it's not an action, but I understand why, why knowledge is important.
Yeah. Usually when it's on the other side.
Yes.
Okay. May I move on to item number three?
Yes.
Okay, this is the time block that we've reserved for Rundle citizen comments. They need to be on a subject that's not in the agenda. Person needs to either be a resident of a Rundle or a property owner in a Rundle and request the initial time must be limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone from the public who wants to make a public comment? Thank you, okay. Hereby close the public comment period. New applications. Branch Brook Fuel Amendment to Conditional Use Approval. Do I have to read this whole thing, or?
Yeah, it's not 100% correct either, so.
Okay.
Description of what that, but it's not what the engineering firm was requesting.
Okay, can you, let's start by you clarifying that.
Okay.
Please. I'm sorry, introduce yourself, please.
I'm John Hughes from Branch Brook Fuels.
Okay, thank you.
In our original plan, we really didn't define piping layout and so forth, and in the final planning stages, we opted to look at changing the new proposed facility into all fuel oil storage as opposed to a mix with kerosene and fuel oil. So we were going to eliminate the potential of one pipeline and make the tanks all the same size. The original plan called for three 20s and a 12. And I was asking Tad what it was that we needed to do, and I'm asking the board what it is that we need to do to make that change. We're weighing that out right now. I don't know how much you remember about the project. I've got some copies of the layout and stuff.
Fair enough about it.
Quick question?
Sure.
The other three tanks are also 20,000.
That's correct.
And the new 20,000 is situated within the same footprint of the containment? So the containment dike is staying the same size?
The dike is.
The 12,000 gallon tank was the same diameter, it was just shorter.
Right.
Okay.
And the tank, the containment is designed to contain 110% of the largest vessels, so we're really not changing the dike at all.
And I'm thinking, I was thinking more just from a lateral X, Y dimension.
Uh, no, when I talked with Tad, and I think that's where the confusion came, we were talking about making sure that the unloading pad in the back was going to be able to be contained in there for elevation reasons, making sure it'll drain into the dike. And we started looking the other day, since I talked with Tad about elevations and to get that pad to pitch into the containment, we're not going to have to do much other than raise that area maybe eight or 10 inches so that where the truck is will run in. We originally talked about possibly having to increase the footprint so that where we entered the dike would be below the high liquid level. But what we're seeing now, a small adjustment to where the truck's sitting is all it's going to need.
Are you still, is the French drain concept still there?
Yes, yeah, nothing's changed. The reason for all of this is we are going to use the existing tank we have now that's under the facility, the underground one.
Yeah.
That's going to be used for kerosene.
I'm sorry, I, we're reading it. Is that tank being moved?
The existing one?
I thought the existing, okay.
Staying right where it is.
I saw something, something about relocating it.
No.
If it was in the stack.
Yeah, no, once it comes out of the ground, you can't put it back in without recertifying it.
Yeah, I figured.
What, what that was referring to, Mr. Chairman, was the fact that the, that they're going to use that for the certain remaining service life.
Yes, for another, for another 10.
And they removed that.
It's not relocating, it's repurposing.
Right, yes, repurposing and then. That has 10 years' life under DEP rules right now, so.
Okay.
In 10 years, that'll go, and I'll be back for.
Okay.
A permit to pour new pads and stuff.
Speaking of DEP, can you, can you tell us a little bit about the permit that you're required to have from them and where you are in that process, please?
There isn't a permit required by the DEP, but I have since learned that by applying to the Fire Marshal, which is the entity that determines the permits and so forth, now, they didn't used to do this, but now they are sending the whole package to the DEP for review as far as citing goes and all, all things that they would have involvement with it. Originally, the DEP wasn't involved at all in the permitting process, but now a full set of plans have to go to the DEP for review. So there's more to it now than there has been in the past.
Okay, I, I'm, oh, now Chris isn't going to give it all. I don't understand, the DEP reviews the plans, but they, they don't have to issue a permit?
It's part of the Fire Marshal permit.
Part of the Fire, okay.
The Fire Marshal gets the whole package, and then they parcel off a piece of it to the DEP.
That, that, that's fine, I, I got, I just.
And that's not.
I just wanted to understand how the process works.
It's fairly common for a DEP permit to do that, and they send out something maybe to inland fisheries and wildlife for review, and they comment that, so.
Yeah, so once we get the green light for the Fire Marshal view, in essence, it's got both.
Right.
Have you heard anything from the Fire Marshal yet?
We haven't even made a permit yet.
Okay.
Our plan is May or June to start this project, when we're at our slowest. So that's what kind of generated a lot of these questions that I'm asking of you folks now, is we're in the process now of getting tanks ordered, getting the final stuff sent to the Fire Marshal, getting packages together. I just got Saint Germain Collins back involved with the project two weeks ago.
If I understand this correctly, you're going to be using less piping.
That's correct.
You're going to have the four tanks that, so you're not going to be expanding any of this, other than going a little bit higher.
Right.
12,000, you're not expanding in any direction.
No.
The containment field is going to stay the same. There won't be any changes to that.
Requirement of 110% largest vessels doesn't change.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, you, you are still required to do visual inspection of the water in the containment area.
Right, nothing's changed there.
There's, there's something, okay.
So I guess my question would be to the town planner, is there, does this raise any flags, anything we need to be concerned about? It's just an increase in the intensity of the use from what you, what you originally approved. So it would be, have to be an amendment to the plan, and the question the applicant is asking, what do you need? I mean, if we were to proceed with increasing from 12,000 to 20,000 gallons, what do I, what do I need to provide to the planning board in order to gain, to get an approval for amending the plan?
Did he send you a full-size copy of these plans?
Those are, those are the signed plans, those are the stamped, signed plans.
Oh, okay.
That's the ones you approved.
The way I look at it.
That's a PDF of it. Because I'm just, I'm looking at it thinking, I'm not sure that, that, other than amending the plan and making a note of it, I'm not sure if there's anything that, that we have to do, or that the applicant has to do other than make that change.
I, I, I would note that this is an 11% increase in the total capacity of the storage, which to me is, is, there's, there's no change in the height, there's no change in the width, no change in the screening requirements, there's no change in the containment dike, no change in the stonewall management requirements.
Actually, 10%. Going from seven.
Seventy-two to eighteen.
Eleven, okay, yep.
We do have one tank that we're going.
Right, I do know how to use a calculator.
Yeah, I was going backwards.
I'm thinking that it's, it's.
I'm not sure, I think it's just simply a matter of submitting a plan that says we're changing this.
Yeah. And the issue for the board, the only other issue would be, you know, we have, we have, we have three tanks at, up to 35 feet, and, and the one that was lower now will have four tanks in a group that are going to be 35 feet.
Okay, I think, I think the biggest question in my mind is, although it is, from my perspective, it's a minimal change, do we require a public hearing?
That's the last decision. We think we have to, there's a change to the plan.
I, 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 I think it is, it's only an 11% increase, but it is, is a change.
You know, we don't have any leeway on, like with a, with a manner, amendment, or de minimis change, just to.
Let's put it this way, if we turn out to have a public hearing, okay? Everybody who is concerned or had questions would be totally filled in, so it's not stating that a change has been made without their knowledge.
Let me put it again, to boil it down, I'd rather be safe and sorry on a public hearing issue.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking at it thinking, we had a public hearing on the original permit.
Correct.
And now if we want to amend that permit, I think we need to have another public hearing.
Yeah, we might delay it two weeks, but I don't see, no one showed up to the initial publication.
It's, it's not delaying his construction, and he hasn't.
Yeah, the only concern I have is just tank ordering, but, I don't know, so you say it would be another two weeks?
Well, it'd be two weeks from whenever you, you.
You, you would, you would need, you would need to submit an.
Amendment.
Amendment, which can't happen until the first meeting in March, and so we would, as soon as we could have a public hearing, would be the second meeting in March.
Okay, so that would bring us to my third week.
Four weeks from today. Yeah, four weeks from today.
It's the 22nd.
I have to advertise it 14 days prior. 10 days, actually.
I got to talk to my tank guys, I may just omit that tank completely. The concern I have is I'm putting the same product in all four tanks, so if you were to fill the tanks equally, you're going to come to the top of the 12 before you come to the top of the 20s, so it's, it's, it's an overfill hazard. What I can do is just leave tank four out of the picture. When it comes time to take the other tank out of service in 10 years, I'll put a tank there. The dike is built, everything is there. I'm just concerned I'm missing my May-June window. I have to have a two-month lead time for tanks, so I think I'm better safe than sorry.
I mean, I'm struggling with the notion of not allowing it as a de minimis change. I, there's no change to the footprint, no change to anything other than the, the total volume, which, you know, when you take this whole scale of the tank farm, I think your math was just one tank to the other, correct?
No, no, my math, my math was the 12.
All four, okay.
But I actually, I'm sorry, sir, what, what, I, you know, I left out the underground tank. What, what is this, is that an 8,000 gallons?
Ten.
No, it's one.
The, oh, the existing one is 20?
Yep.
Okay, well then, then we've got, we have 92.
I mean.
Ninety, ninety-two.
Nine percent.
Up to.
Nine percent.
Yeah. I mean.
The engineering work has already been done.
Right.
Visually, there'll be no difference in impact because they're all.
It's the back tank. It's the back right tank.
So could you, could you have the plans ready by, in two weeks?
Um, as far as I know, I could have the plans ready tomorrow, because all they got to do is say that in the drawing, all it's going to do is say it's a 20, correct?
Yeah.
That's all it is.
They're not even going to change the size of anything on the drawing.
Or look any different.
They need to change one note.
How would that affect?
It's seven days. We have to advertise seven days.
It's seven days, so we could, we could put it on the agenda for two weeks from now.
Yeah.
Because the.
But that, okay, that's assuming that we don't have a public hearing.
That is. No, no, that is a public hearing.
No, that would be, yeah, and I could probably pull that off, I think. I got to, I got to make a few calls in the morning.
Is there any reason we can't have a public hearing and take action same night?
No.
We do that all the time.
Through ten.
Okay, so.
All right, I'll get Chris to make the changes. That shouldn't be a problem.
The only thing I would need from you is you give us money for the advertising, okay? Because we, I have to advertise in the paper.
Yep.
Okay, so that is. That's Mark Martin, okay?
I'll let you know.
Because I think Chris can send the, change the plan electronically.
I need plans.
You need plans? Okay. He's going to change that one note that says that tank number four is a 12, and that's it.
The soonest that I would need it would be next Friday.
All right, I'll get with him tomorrow.
Next Thursday, in a week.
A, a question. I'm sure you considered this, are, are there any, is there anything to be concerned about or think about, or changing the use of the existing underground tank from number two heating oil to kerosene? Does kerosene have any, does it, can, can a tank that help oil find leak with kerosene, or is it?
There's not a big difference in viscosity, there's a little difference in weight, slightly lighter.
Kerosene is lighter, yes.
Yeah, yeah, but we're going to clean the tank before that tank, when the new product goes in, the tank will be cleaned.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, 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 I'm just trying, I just tried to do.
We were trying, what we were trying to do was keep the cost of the project down, and only we're doing one pipeline, one pump. The big thing that came up was, I mean, obviously, we originally planned on only having three 20s for fuel oil anyway. We just said, Jesus, if we're going to build this thing, let's make them all the same, and we were going to flange the piping so that when that kerosene tank comes out of storage, out of us service, rather, we could just change the piping, add a pump, we're back in business. Tank four becomes kerosene, which is bigger than I really need, but for the next 10 years, the ability to use all four tanks at the same level, you know, and I got crane there now, and I got pipe welder there now, I can put it all together, but I can just as easily build the same concrete structure with four pedestals inside, and one of the tanks misses the deal. In 10 years from now, we buy a tank and take the 20 out of service that's underground. So it'll work either way. I'm more, I'd like to do it, but I don't have to do it.
Okay, can I have a, would someone, would we need a motion for a public hearing to hold, schedule a public hearing, correct?
Correct. We scheduled a public hearing for the next meeting?
March 8.
March 8.
Second.
Okay, motion is moved and seconded. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Good.
So get us the plans and.
That should work.
Pay for the advertising, and thank you very much for coming in.
Good, thank you. I'll be in touch next week.
Okay. I'm going to advertise it, and I'll get an idea of what the cost is for the paper. Okay. Just let me know. Soon as I hear from Chris, I'll be in touch.
Okay. So Chris is handling this, right?
Yeah. Back again?
Yep.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is proposed amendments to Rundle Wiggzordnits regarding equestrian stables, because somehow we got the, the largest and the smaller commercial stable covered, but we did not finish the equestrian stable. At a meeting which I did not attend, the board was leaning towards reducing the number of animals from 10 to six for the definition of this, of equestrian stable. And there were some questions about permitted by zone. Is, is the pleasure of the board, I see that Ms. Castner is here, and I assume that she's here about horses, shall we perhaps get input from the public first? Is that agreeable?
Well, a lot of singularities arrived at this point since our last discussions, or do you want me to just, Tad gave me the draft that I think we're looking at as the most recent draft.
Is this the January 25th draft?
Yeah, so I did have some questions and some comments. I think we're making some good progress here, for sure. So the category that sort of seems to be missing, so the way I'm understanding is, we're looking at the chart here, the zone, there are no Ps on here, so there's nothing just permitted. In other words, to have one horse at your house, you have to come to the planning board. Is that not true?
That's not how I understood it when we talked last week, or a couple of weeks ago.
So this says a structure where six or less equines are kept for purposes of boarding, breeding, personal use, training, limited to those being brought on the premises. So if I.
If you had your own horse.
Right.
But did not board another horse, that would fall, as I understood, and Tad, correct me if I'm wrong, would fall as like a agricultural use, and it wouldn't fall into the stable category.
My, my understanding is that the, the triggers would be boarding, training.
Right.
And what else?
So the boarding of others, that, that just.
Yep. I mean, that's.
Others, yep.
See, I built four stall barns at my house. Hi, I'm Erin, nice to meet you guys.
Hi, Erin. Erin, last name, please.
Mathevier, I've been here a few times.
I, I, I know, it's for the cameras.
Oh, okay. So we have not yet filled our facility yet. We're going to have a barn with four stalls in it, I have two horses of my own that'll be coming home. So the second that we decide to fill the other two stalls, say, I buy two more horses for myself or with other boarders, that's, if I fill it with other boarders, before that happens, I need to come here, correct?
Uh, that's the way it's written currently.
So to me, that, maybe we could carve out another, I mean, that just seems to be overregulating a very small-scale, not intensive type use, no different than a home occupation, or something that's totally accessory to your residential. We don't live on a property here.
Well, hold on, hold on, occupations are supposed to get permits also.
Okay, well, so it's it's not anything that's going to generate any large-scale traffic concerns, noise concerns, any of those sorts of things. And so again, somebody, you know, Kim Metzickel was here, and Nicole Minoff was here the last time, and they have barns, and they have, they rent out a stall to the neighbor or something like that. It just seems there's a distinction between somebody who's really operating this more as a uncommercial or for-profit basis than somebody who has it in their backyard and they're just agricultural, you know, farming. So, um, I just wanted to hear your comments since the last time you spoke about that, and whether there is a carve-out for that sort of a thing, I don't know if it's a number.
But the the problem is that if there's a carve-out for that kind of thing, what's that carve-out? If you say, well, it's two, then the person who has three is gonna say, well, why not just expand it a little more? And you end up with creep, that that it slowly becomes bigger and bigger and bigger. The easiest way to handle that, in my opinion, is to say, no. If you are generating income, you may not make a profit, but if you're generating income by having, by renting those stalls out, that's a commercial use, and it should be regular.
Let's be careful of the word "commercial," because I talked to Tad about that, I don't, I I definitely agree, Rich, that it's income-producing and it should be reported on the tax records, blah blah. But once we get into calling something "commercial" and labeling it "commercial," then in our world, we have to get commercial general liability insurance, their costs are enormous, we can't get residential mortgage rates because it's labeled as "commercial." So I think you have to be very careful about that, certainly it's income-producing, I know that.
And I understand, yeah, we're not calling this a "commercial" equestrian stable, we're simply saying it's an equestrian stable. So, yeah, from it, but from an income point of view, if you're collecting income from this, then it.
Well, so if I rent my room out in my garage, do I come and play with or should we permit?
Theoretically, theoretically, it becomes an accessory apartment, and you would, and that would require a permit. But again, that's just theoretically.
You have the planning board, you you go to the code enforcement office, but but you you actually are, but.
The answer probably is, yes, you are supposed to do that. For something that's, you know, in this town anyway, historically, you could drive up and down a bunch of roads and see somebody with a horse or pony out there, and they've got somebody else's pony there that, you know.
You can you can see them on New Road.
Yeah, mhm. The other thing I wanted to mention, and Tad, I just had a a comment on the wording on equestrian stable. You have all the other ones that starts out with a facility where, and I just changed the first part of the question table, "stable" to "a facility where," and blah blah blah, blah blah. So then, the next, so the issue is, if you're boarding, you come to the planning board. If you're not boarding, so I could have ten horses if my property was large enough, and none of them, and they're all mine.
And we we did have that discussion, and you are correct.
And even though that might actually generate more intensity and cause more.
So what about leasing? So if I wanna, so say.
Lease one of your horses, lease all my horses.
Yeah, no, I think you're covered because.
So covered.
Because my horse.
It's your horse.
But I am generating income.
But it's not boarding.
I'm not boarding my horse at your house.
Mm.
I'm coming to ride the horse. It's your horse, so I can keep, okay, I'm leasing.
Even if you were saying paying it under bucks a month?
Yeah. Because I'm not boarding my horse at your house.
I mean, that's how I'm reading this, but. So then, um.
Can I, can I, go ahead, Marty?
No, go ask away, let me just.
I I I was not here for the discussion where the the equestrian staple was reduced from ten to six. And I I want to know why, because.
Why you're here?
Huh, I I wasn't here. So you, because I was a dog, and you really didn't walk in here. But the the, I I don't understand why, i- i- in in the context of a rundle and a rural character and all the conference and planning committee goals and 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 such, I don't understand why this was reduced from ten to six. Let me rephrase that, I don't understand why the proposed.
Yeah.
Language shows six instead of ten.
I go back, I'll go back to what Rich came up with, the creep, or what number makes it large-scale enough to be an issue to neighbors or resources. To me, ten seems like, um, might be tipping the scale a little bit. And why not twelve or eighteen? It it is, it's a, it's not a temporary number, it it's hard to pick the right number, but ten, to me, just seems like it's.
Ten's a nice round number.
Yeah.
But you're totally limited, Tom, by your lot size requirements. So I can't have ten unless I have twenty acres, right? One horse per acre.
Yeah, well, I I haven't gotten to that one yet, but.
So you're self-regulating.
I have a question about that, too.
Depending on the lot size, and there aren't that many lots that could actually handle that many horses. The other point about that is, you're not gonna get that really funny, I mean, if if your ordinance says this many, then that's as many, you know.
But.
The other thing is, you're gonna have, it's very difficult for one person to care for more than ten horses. So that, you know, that in itself is regulating the number that I'm gonna have on my private farm facility, because there ain't no way I'm.
There's nothing in here that says you can hire somebody.
Well, I understand that.
But that number of how many you have on your private farm is not an issue for the ordinance. The ordinance is looking at it go from an income-generating point of view. And if you have income generating, then you're restricted to the end.
But Rich, if you have a a a a family with two people, with two, three people and five horses.
Yep.
Could easily have five horses for their own, for their own use.
They could.
And I I don't have any problem with them adding three more stalls that that they, you know, that that they they board three more horses to try to recoup some of the cost of the little beasties. I I just, I I.
Sure, okay, maybe, I I see both sides, so I, but maybe we could add something that that at least fifty percent of the horses cannot be, no more than fifty percent can be boarded, or something like that.
I I love that, I I, Tom, that's a great idea, I like that.
Yeah, but then it's hard that accessory.
Because I I I understand, if if I had five horses, I'd like maybe to get some some income just to help if for for the barn and.
And and I'm gonna take a really bad approach here, and I'll tell you that right up front. If you've got five horses and you can't afford the five horses, get rid of one of the horses. You can't afford to have five, if you have to rent space out to pay for it, I'm sorry, you can't afford them.
Rich, the accountant's coming out, you're.
Of course.
Five things come up suddenly, and you have horses and hay prices skyrocket, rocket, or shavings prices skyrocket.
A horse has an injury.
Or there's an injury, or, you know, your child becomes very sick and hostileized, and you have five horses but have to pay for a sick child. Sometimes things like that come on suddenly, so.
And I'm not saying they don't, we're addressing the issue of of how many you should have. Yes, emergency situations arrive and things have to be dealt with, but that doesn't mean.
Rich, that time of rich.
Okay.
Did the, the question I was raising was why six and not the ten that we had had in there for a year, over a year?
And I don't remember the reason that we lowered it to six.
And well, okay.
It was a discussion that everybody had, we got over it.
Abs- absent a compelling reason to lower it to six.
I have a compelling reason, though.
But but I I I wanted to to add, I really like Tom's idea of that that it's ten or, it's not less, Tad, it's fewer. Ten or fewer horses, at least fifty percent of which need to be, belong to.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, I do, yeah.
I don't.
The reason why ten seemed too much, I mean, because there's nothing, they're saying they couldn't all be boarded, you know, how would you know?
Right, and and I think that was, that was part of it. If you're boarding, if you're boarding ten horses, that is a business.
That that is an enforcement question, and I do understand that. Can we compromise on eight?
Ten.
Okay, Marty, I'm happy with ten, but.
With the fifty percent, I mean, I think that is your your issue, I think, that it's not primarily a boarding barn, it's a private barn, and you're also able to.
I would, yeah, I mean, I think eight with, you know, more than fifty percent, which pretty much makes it go five to three, owned versus boarded, right? If you had, if we did eight, eight or fewer.
Eight or fewer and no more than fifty percent.
Or boarded.
Or boarded.
So you could do fifty-fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or mine and or yours, or whatever.
I still like the number ten. Marty, I agree, I'm just trying to get the. I'm just, I'm, I'm not, I'm just staying in my ten.
I don't like the concept at all, and I'll tell you, because if you're in an R-one zone, do you wanna live next to a house that has eight horses in it? That's gonna be a lot of activity.
Yes, because if I'm on an R-one zone, I have enough acres.
I I don't, I don't believe in zoning by acreage size.
Rich, I I wanna get to the acreage and the and the zones, if further in our discussion.
Okay.
But I think that was, that was part of the integral discussion that Rich was having, that that led us down a little bit to a lower number.
I I I, okay. Mr. Platter?
Let me upset the apple cart even more.
Okay.
Why?
Well, because, well, let's look at it in context, because what we've been doing is, we've been doing this alone. We've been doing this not being in context. We started struggling with the animal husbandry issue, okay? And I guess the question to me is, what is the real impact of horses that are not, and what's the real impact of the stable? If we really look at the impact of the stable to a neighborhood, may not necessarily be the horses, yes, it's it's a manure management, it's 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 a number of proximity to the house, but really, what it boils down to is the activity that occurs there. And one of the concerns, one of the reasons we did this was because one of the big issues was who's coming and how often they're coming, and what is the load in terms of people that are on the site? What is the traffic impact, what is the noise impact?
Oh, okay.
And that's where we get into lessons, I have a dressage class, or we have events, we have a dressage.
No, no, Tad, events aren't supposed to be under the equestrian stable at all, I thought.
No, it's a commercial stable, we'll have events. If you're a commercial stable.
It's not, it's not, no.
We're talking just the equestrian stable.
I'm just talking about the equestrian stable, there are no, there are no events happening, Ted.
But if we're gonna handle this under, under basically animal husbandry, because it's gonna be the same thing. Horses are in animal husbandry, should we handle it under animal husbandry, as long as there's no lessons or there there's no classes or anything like that?
Ted, we are, we're trying to accommodate normal farmers, or or normal people who have horses, and they want to board one, two, four horses.
Well, as, you know, having four horses, I might wanna teach a lesson or two.
And and.
So who's to say I couldn't do something like that?
I mean, we're we're talking about a hobby farm, so.
You know, we're very bare to basics.
That that's what it boils down to, and and I.
Well, the animal husbandry would be a code enforcement, you're not to apply.
So.
But that's not.
All right, so I know it's gonna, can I interject?
Please, Jamie.
So I understand the concern, the R-one with limited lot sizes. Why, I mean, it's an extra sentence in the definition to limit it to to six in the R-one and open it up to ten in the other zones. Keeping the, keeping the caveat that fifty, no more than fifty percent are boarded. And and go from there.
What what what, why does, okay, if we're if we're gonna go into the zone, and I think we should. Acres. Why why are we allowing equestrian staples in R-one at all?
That's a good question.
Because if I have fifty acres in R-one, I should not be limited, just because somebody else might decide they wanna subdivide that into more acre lots, but I wanna keep it and I preserve it and I go and put conservation easement on it, it's my fifty acres.
And and ultimately, our current zoning and our lot sizes, for the most part, you know, we don't have what I would consider a real traditional, strong R-one zone. We've got some areas that people have thought in the past would be good for R-one, and they've got some smaller lots, you know, right up along roads or wherever, but, you know, it's not like it's a real traditional R-one zone.
Swecker's in R-one, Ted?
Yes.
So there's a perfect example.
Sugarstone?
The Swecker's farm, um, been said for a long time.
On Senate Road?
No, the one right up here on Limerick Road, just go past Bert Cawdill's, the one old farm on the left.
Oh, that. Yeah, 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 okay.
Perfect examples, beautiful farm, thirty acres, whatever it is. I'm dying for somebody like Erin to buy that, and, you know, it has barn, it has stalls, Mr. Swecker used to have, you know, a nice riding ring and stuff, and hay it, and that'd be perfect use for that.
So, but then, Jamie, I'll say to you.
Yeah.
Then look at, look at, um, other few acres and New Road and Liberty Acres.
Yeah.
That is all, that is very traditional.
That would be more R-one, and that's not, I was thinking more of up along Limerick Road versus that.
Limerick Road has the potential to be all of that as well.
It does.
The acreage does play into it, though, because in 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 clear few estates, there there's not enough acreage to have more than one, maybe two.
Okay, okay, so so I like like Jamie's compromise of saying, okay, if.
But then again, it limits.
If if our, if our zone, if the zoning makes sense based on actual usage, then then I would say it shouldn't be.
We shouldn't need it.
We shouldn't have it in R-one. However, our zoning doesn't make sense, and I I I think we should allow it. So I think your solution of no fewer than ten, except for R-one, whereas no fewer than six.
No, no, no.
No, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, yeah.
Six or fewer than ten.
Well, here's here's a thought or question, one of the same idea.
Well, I'm I'm sorry, hold on, just bear with me, Marty, I'm trying to.
I'm coming with you.
Let me, let me just close the box on on the on the the six versus ten. Is is that acceptable to you, Mr. Gannon?
It wasn't acceptable to me at six, because I don't think we should have them in the R-one.
Okay.
But that's just me.
Okay.
I lost that battle last two weeks ago.
Okay.
Now, my thought was, also among ideas in the R-one, if you have, they say, they say what, a half an acre per horse, okay? If you have, for example, you have ten acres, you're not trying to put twenty horses in there, you should be able to at least put your ten. I mean, uh. So that 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 way you.
So you're saying in the R-one?
Yeah, I mean, uh, because that way you aren't necessarily having neighbors' conflict or anything else. You got room for them to play, and and you also have enough room to take care of their needs of distribution or anything else. Instead of limiting it to a half acre, turn and go to your acre, turn and turn around saying that, okay, up to ten, I mean, uh.
So you need five acres if you have ten.
Huh?
You need five acres if you had.
No, I'm saying one acre per.
In the R-one?
Yeah, I mean, that way you turn out, you're you're putting your numbers up, but it turns out at the same time, but you're still keeping it under ten, or ten and under.
You know, I I like Marty's suggestion better than mine, and that it it doesn't, it doesn't artificially penalize somebody in the R-one that has a large. it doesn't artificially penalize somebody in the R1 that has a large lot. I mean, just, and, and what I, what I suggested would, if you were in the R1, you had, you had fifty acres.
Well, there, there, there's also, there's also important, Marty's suggestion is much easier to enforce.
Right.
The code enforcement officer goes to the barn, he counts horses' noses, boom, you know, they, they, you know.
Yeah.
They, you know, the tax map says it's an eight acre, or, or, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It says, yeah, says it's an eight acre lot, and there are nine horses in there. Oops, we, we got a violation. That's, that's infinitely easier to enforce.
Right.
And I, that's one thing I'm, I'm, I'm learning here is, I, I want to avoid.
Compensation.
No, I, no, I want to avoid writing regulations that you can't enforce.
Right.
Or, or they, or they won't be enforced.
Well, not something simply written is the deal.
Yeah.
Something that's black and white, this is how it is, if you breach it, then.
So, so what, what do you, what do you all?
I, I still, I, I, I'm, I'm still inclined to limit it to six in the, in the, um, R1.
Even with twenty acres.
What are, what are you?
Even if you have twenty acres, you want to still limit it to six?
They're closing against.
Uh, one of the problems that, that we have is that the, the zoning map, the way it's drawn, that there, that there are portions of R1 that shouldn't be R1, and make that, makes absolutely no sense. And so that's one of the things we struggle with when we're writing. Are, are we, are we, are, are we writing the regulations for the ideal of what R1 is supposed to be, or are we writing them for the reality of what R1 actually is?
Can I ask a question to the audience?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, what is, what is your perception on the, the half acre per animal threshold?
That's very standard.
I think it is very standard.
You know, I pulled out about eight different ordinances that are more matching to a level than what the very first version of this was, and I think it's pretty standard, and I know you've done some stuff, and, um, you know, you, you get out to Montana or someplace, it's probably going to be different, but.
Sure.
One horse, half an acre is really only safe because you don't want to have over problems.
But if we were to do one horse per one acre in the R1 to keep it from being as concentrated?
But, I'm sorry, is, is the, is the, is the one requiring one acre per horse? And, and, and that, that actually brings me to another question here, which is, this is the maximum number of horses boarded, and that, then, then again, we've got the enforcement question of, I, I, I'm not sure that this should be the maximum number of horses boarded. I think it should be the maximum number of horses.
Yes.
And then you have the qualification about fifty percent, so long as only fifty percent.
No, no, I, I, I actually think we're throwing out the fifty percent.
That's unenforceable, you know.
And, and that's, that's where I'm heading, but, but we, we also don't, the code enforcement officer goes to the barn. He doesn't know whether the Palomino, to, to, I don't even know what a Palomino is exactly.
I'm impressed you do Palomino, so you're doing good so far.
But, but he doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't know which one, you know, they, they don't have labels or barcodes on them. This one's boarded, this one belongs to the owner, I, I just think it's a lot simpler. I, I, I would propose that that.
I think I agree with that.
Nine point three point one nine, it should just be the maximum number of horses.
And what will that maximum number be? And you're talking about just in that heading, right?
But that's just in the, are you talking about in, in all of the districts or just in the R1?
I'm talking about all the districts.
Okay.
I mean, this is a, this is a hobby farm, the, the idea is, this, this is supposed to be a hobby farm. If you, if you have more than ten horses, I don't care if nine of them are yours and one of them is, you know, two of them are boarded.
But the question has to be asked, what if all ten of them are being boarded?
Then it'd be, then, well.
Then it's, that's, fits in the same category, so then, is it a business or is it, or is it a hobby?
But this fits into the, this is part of the problem that I have. I don't care, excuse me, Milda, I don't care how many horses Milda has, and how many, if they're all her own personal horses, I don't care. She can have fifty of them, if she's got the land to do so where she's at right now, because that's personally, you couldn't justify fifty and make me believe that they were all just personal use. But I don't think we should be restricting families in terms of how many horses they can personally own. This is geared more at an income-producing section, and from an income-producing section, then I agree, it's, we can limit it, we can do any number of things.
Yeah, Rich, I, 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 I think, I think the reality that, I, I, I understand your passion.
Okay.
But, but the, but the, the reality of farming, you, you don't want to be an accountant if you're a farmer. Trust me, because it's just not pretty.
Although this is great money to be made that way, in Governor Grant's field.
Okay.
But.
We're not going to the grass, we're talking about days and ages.
But we're, we're calling it a hobby farm, therefore, by definition, it's to generate income. No.
Not necessarily generate income.
If it weren't a, if it weren't a hobby farm, you wouldn't be generating anything. It'd just be your own personal.
I have a hobby farm that generates losses.
So there's no income at all?
There is income.
I rest my case.
That's significant.
It doesn't matter, Marty. In my world.
Why, you're trying to play red line and black line?
So if we have losses, it doesn't matter?
No, no, we, we just need, he's getting close, he's, it's too close to taxes.
It's fifteen April fifteenth, if you guys should have come in here on the sixteen, things would be totally different.
I know.
I think the issue really is, is this being done as a business or is this being done as, as a, as a?
A de minimis, that consists of a hobby farm where it's not for profit, commercial.
Can, can, can we? I, I don't.
That's where the fifty percent.
I'm okay if we settle on eight instead of ten, I just, to me, six just seemed too, too tight. Um, and, and the one acre per animal, that, that is only in R1, correct?
Yes.
That was my thought.
That, that.
Just to, just to reduce the.
And, and I, and I, I like that idea, that, that, that only for R1, it be.
What's a R1, with the ten acres, ten horses?
So there's, there's.
How are you there?
I think that goes, I think that's better word, I love that too.
There's another question. Pretty worried about the wording?
I think that's more than.
Well, the equestrian stable applies to town Y, it's not just for the R1.
No, exactly.
So I'm going to have to put in, I'm going to have to put in a.
One equine per half acre, up to ten equines maximum, except for in the R1, in which one equine per whole acre, up to ten equines.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, on, on, okay.
But I have, I have to bring up another issue I think we brought up last meeting, and that is, are horses different than cows?
Yes.
So.
Yeah.
But why, you said, so.
The, the, the difference is you don't have, Ted, Ted covered it pretty well. If, 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 if the horses are strictly for, for personal use, okay? I've got an extended family with three generations living on the property, and we have twelve horses. The, the traffic, the car traffic, noise, all that sort of thing, isn't any, any different whether we have twelve horses or twelve cows, okay? Cow, cows produce more manure than horses because they're bigger and they eat more. But other than that, so that would all fall under the animal husbandry.
Well, the other thing is, most people aren't buying horse meat today.
What, what, what we're.
So.
That is also true.
But how many are also generally will sit and not be dealt with? Horse manure is generally picked up because horses are usually going to stall at night. So it's not as much of a stink, it's not as loud, cows are moving all the time, horses are not neighing all the time.
Moving all the time.
You know?
I've never heard yours move.
Bigger operations, you go by and you hear them.
So if we say ten to horses, how, can we say ten to cows?
No.
You're already saying the same, you're already saying the same thing.
We're going to talk about animal husbandry next, okay?
Can we stick to horses for now, please?
But it's, it's hard to separate, because right now, we don't allow ten cows around here. And it's, and, and, I don't think we know.
Well, your proposal for.
We make a distinction, yeah.
Same.
The distinction is that an equestrian stable is, it's, it's different because, as Maury says, the product that's being produced is not for consumption. It's, 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 if anything, the consumption is, I'm raising a foal and I'm going to sell the horse. That's, that's about it, but, and it's a different animal, it's a domesticated animal that's supposed to interact with humans, you don't want to interact with a bull.
Yeah, you're welcome, so go ride the animal with the ring in his nose at my place.
Right, right. Unless, unless you're.
It's going to say more and get it up and down.
Out west in the rodeo, you don't want to interact with a bull.
So, but, Mr. Jim?
Yeah.
I want to make a motion.
Okay.
I want to make a motion that we amend nine, three, nineteen B. Maximum number of horses shall be confined to one, uh, one equine per half acre, up to ten equines maximum, with the R1 district having a requirement of one acre per equine, up to a maximum of six. I think we make a motion, we get it started and get some debate going, because otherwise, we're going to argue this point.
Do I, do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second that, yeah, for discussion.
For discussion?
Of course it's for discussion.
Okay, one acre, one acre in the R1.
One acre.
Up to, up to, up to ten, up to ten, because you turn around, you have one acre per horse. That's where I'm going at my whole basis, okay?
Not that big.
Motion was to six.
The, the motion was to six.
I know, that's where I'm saying to, for discussion.
Yep, it's absolutely.
One acre per horse up to ten.
In R1.
R1.
In R1.
That way you're not putting six, that's why you're not putting six.
And, and I understand that I cannot.
Three and a half acres.
Well, I understand that I cannot win my, my point of not having them in the R1. So to me, this is the compromise that I'm willing to make.
Well, that's your, you're on that end of the fence, that's why I'm sitting, I'm just sitting on the fence.
I'm actually okay with the, the six, um, because when you go over, yeah, it, it is kind of arbitrary, but, um.
So even if you've got thirty acres in R1?
That's what I struggle with, is that if, if you do have one of the large lot, R1.
Do we know how many large lots?
Yeah, R1 lots, then to artificially just say you can't have any more than six, even though you've got plenty of space to have it, is troublesome to me.
But we're arbitrarily going to say you can't have any more than ten on the other side of the line?
So, so let's not do that then, and just do one per, one per acre.
That means across, across town?
No, in the R1.
Just in R1.
Right.
That was Maury's.
I mean, where we've got.
With no limit?
Well, if, if the arbitrariness of it is what bothers people, then sure, take it out.
Why, why allow no limit in R1 for a, of, of.
Tom, he's not being serious.
Oh, okay.
He's making, he's making a point.
Okay, I didn't get that, I'm slow tonight.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion, we have a second, um. I would like some simplicity here, and ten just seems like a, you know, yes, it's arbitrary, but let's be consistent about it, that, that ten or fewer is an, an equestrian stable, and eleven or more falls into one of the other two, and I, I just, if, I'm the chairman, so I can't make a counter motion or amend the motion or whatever.
I tried to amend the motion, but we have to, before you amend the motion, it has to be defeated. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it doesn't.
You can amend the motion.
I, I like to amend the motion. Ten with one acre per horse.
For R1.
For R1.
Okay, and we're not, and we're going to strike the word boarded from B there.
Right.
Just maximum number of horses, is that correct?
Correct.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Was Marty, is Marty drawing his second?
No.
Marty didn't second.
Marty didn't second.
He's suggesting an amendment, but you'd have to go along, you'd have to go along, I guess. Yeah, Rich would have to go along to do that, so, I mean, it would seem like you have to object.
There's a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman.
I know there's a motion on the floor, Mr. Ginnon, may I respectfully request?
Or we could vote it down and then try.
Well, let, let's just, we can either have a vote or you're going to amend your, your motion.
I think we need to have a vote on the amendment.
Okay, like, oh.
On the amendment?
On the amendment to, to change it from six to ten.
We haven't, we haven't, I'm sorry, Rich, we, we, we haven't, we haven't done, we haven't taken any action on the six, so.
I, I, but I, I understand that, but my understanding of Robert's rules is that I made a motion, Marty amended the motion, we have to vote on Marty's amendment.
Marty seconded it first.
No, I didn't.
No, he didn't.
I seconded.
No, I did second. So we have to vote on Marty's amendment, and then we vote on the original.
Okay, motion, let, let's, let's just vote on the original motion, and then, if, if, if it's agreeable with the rest of the board, let's vote on the motion as Mr. Ginnon originally stated it.
So can you summarize that very specifically?
That is maximum number of horses, colon, one equine per half acre, up to ten equines maximum, except for the R1 district where the requirement is one acre per horse.
And a maximum of six.
And a max, and a maximum of six. So all those in favor of that signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion is defeated.
You couldn't resist, please?
No, we couldn't.
R1, one acre per horse, uh, up to ten.
Well, it, the.
Up to ten in the R1 zoning.
That, that would.
R1 zoning.
You're going to include the rest of the town?
No, R1 zoning, that's what I'm speaking of, just R1, because this is where our first question is.
It, it would, it would be, Tom, it would be one equine per half acre, up to ten equines maximum.
That's what I was asking.
Except.
In the R1.
In the R1, it is one equine per acre.
So is that, that up to ten?
Up, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All who knows?
No.
Okay, okay, give us four to one. Okay, do we need to, to vote on fixing, no, we don't.
So. The definition's got to be changed.
Right, so the definition in the, the introductory paragraph.
Confused now about where we are with that, so if I have.
Equestrian stable is a facility where ten or fewer equines are kept.
We don't care.
Limited to those being boarded, no.
All the rest of the boarding, breeding, that, those, those.
I don't state the same except for this, because that's in the R1.
That just sort of, just, okay, just sort of lays out what's allowed.
Okay.
And, uh, under nine point three point one nine, one equestrian stable should read a facility in which ten or fewer.
Where it should be a facility where ten or fewer equines.
Okay. Uh, and the provision on indoor rider, riding rigs has been eliminated, that's good. Uh, I, I have a question about lot size, and here, here's my issue, and the, the, the lot size, excludes all hydroric soils, streams, wetlands, and buildings, and driveway, and parking areas.
Where are you on that?
I, I, the, one, one A.
Yeah. Nine, thirteen.
Yeah. The, we're, the, the one acre is not, the, 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 whether it's half acre per horse or one acre per horse, it's not because of grazing. We're, we're, we're not trying to determine, you know, that, 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 that-
Right.
That, that the pasture is big enough for the animals to live off of it without buying any hay. And a lot of farms have a pond, they have streams, they might have a, you know, may, may, maybe there's this lovely raised hillock that's surrounded by rivers and streams or whatever. I, I personally, it's a personal beef, I guess, but the, the exclusion of wetlands and hydroic soils from the calculation bothers me.
I would agree with you. I don't see where we need to, for this type of, equestrian stable type of operation, we need to make it into a, that density calculation.
I'm curious as to whether or not this beef is a public cattle.
I wasn't there to do it, to that fund either. You know, I, you know, these are, this is, this is a, is a simple operation. You know, the equestrian stable should be pretty straightforward. You've got ten acres, you know, to Chip's point, you know, whether, whether half of it is wetland or not, right, you don't wanna get in and have to do all of that stuff.
I, I don't, I, I don't, I don't care. So, my, my, um-
Leave it at minimum lot size, two acres?
Can, can we?
Well, I would, I would say excluding the, the buildings and the driveways.
I'm okay with excluding buildings and driveways. That's, that's fine.
Yeah, then you're excluding your barn.
That, that's okay, I mean, the footprint of the barn is negligible, it's, it's just not, you know, and, and if, and if they have an indoor writing rink, that, that's a, you know, an eighth of an acre, which is a hell of a big indoor writing rink, I think, but, but, you know, okay, but, so, you know, so you have to exclude that.
But why, why, why even go through, I mean, why, for, for that level of operation, why even go through the calculation? Just let it-
I, I'm fine with-
Let it, if you've got eight point, you know, two acres, then you've got eight horses in the R1.
My only question there is minimum lot size, should it be two acres except for R4, where it's three acres? Or is it minimum lot size of two acres, or the minimum lot size in the district? That's probably the better way to put it, that way, when somebody changes R4-
To R3 or whatever.
Hopefully, long after Milda and I are both gone.
You're saying, you're saying the lot, the lot size should be based on the, the requirement for the district?
No, because R1 is one acre zoning, right?
Right.
Well, no.
Couldn't have one unless you had two acres.
So, so-
That's true, you wouldn't be able to.
Could you, could you do two acres?
What's wrong with them?
Right.
If they're already in approved law, what's wrong with them having two acres, just cause, why punish them?
Yeah, I think, I think we leave that.
Okay, actually, I'm sorry, there, there are plenty of two acre lots in the R4 that were created previously.
Right, and there won't be any more.
So, play that, forget what I said. Let's just, let's just have-
Keep it simple.
Let's have A, minimum lot size, two acres. Is, is that agreeable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, now, permitted zones.
Before you go there, can I ask a question about the, uh, the eight, three, nine, eight, nine, three, nineteen, one? A facility in which ten or less equines are kept for the purpose of boarding and breeding, et cetera, providing the training is limited to those horses being boarded on the property. We've already said that the horses don't have to be boarded on the property, where we, if you go down to, to B, we've restricted it to ten horses.
I think the intent there was not boarded being all horses housed on the property, all horses in the barn, not necessarily personal horses versus boarded.
Yeah, well, no, I'm, I'm just asking because it says that, for, it says specifically, provided the training is limited to those horses being boarded, so you're not gonna be able to bring a horse onto the property to have it trained.
That was my intention, is how this was, was set up, is that-
I wanna make sure it's clear.
So, here's a real life story.
I hate real life.
I, everyone, I have a trainer come in from Massachusetts who teaches me, and in order to pay for his time to come, because he'll only do, he'll only come if you've got three at least. I have two friends, I don't get any money for it, but they come in for forty-five minutes and leave, no different than if I was having friends come swim in my pool, or play bridge, or something like that. And, but they are horses that live elsewhere in the world, or stock or something.
Well, that, that is different, cause I don't bring a horse with me when I go to my friend's house to go swimming.
No.
But you drive a car over there, so it's-
But I don't have a trailer with a horse in it.
I know, but that's not any real difference, cause I have plenty of room for it, nobody sees it. So, so that is, um, something where I would say, oh, well, now I'm not allowed to have somebody come, you know, properly to teach me. Um, it's, it's not, you know, anything I make money on, or charge a fee for, or anything like that. But there's a real life story, and that's very similar to many other places that, that have, where you wanna have somebody come in and, and give you lessons.
So, they bring their horses with them?
They do, they stay forty-five minutes and they leave.
With their horse?
Yeah. Nobody's-
Then you're a, that's a commercial equestrian stable?
What?
That's how it would fall into now.
It's not commercial, it's not commercial at all.
It is according to the definition.
Well, I'm saying that the word commercial then means all kinds of other things that are troublesome.
You, you understand the intent.
I understand the intent would be that, you know, you don't wanna have a situation where I'm having an all-day horse show, and people are lining up their trailers in the, in the road, and, you know, there's a poor body, and I'm making money on it. That, that's very different.
How do you define that difference?
Well, I can write it out for you, if you wanted to give them a try, but I-
Why didn't you do that before? No, you didn't.
Come on, scribble real fast. I'm helpful.
I, I couldn't, Jamie, I, I think it's fine the way it is, but I just wanted clarification.
I, I like it, I, I like it the way it is too.
I mean, I was just trying to present the context of it, that I, the way I read it.
Yep.
Yeah. The, the, the-
Let's put it this way, the code enforcement officer isn't around on the weekend anyway.
Well, it's, it's just-
I can't have lessons, my, my own lessons at my house.
I don't think it's saying that, I'm not saying that you're running a business, training, you're running a training.
Oh, I'm not running a business.
But that would be running, it's, the intent is to prevent that from occurring, because that's a nu, that can be a nuisance to the neighbors, especially if you don't have adequate parking, right?
Well, you're addressing the parking anywhere, it's but-
Well, it's, yeah, for the boarded horses, but you're bringing in new horses.
Yeah, and, and, and again, we would get into the, the, the whole zoning district thing, it's been, you know, what, what you're talking about, I don't-
But what she's talking about would require three horse trailers, three trucks, three new horses there at the same time. What she's talking about is in order to get a trainer to progress her knowledge in riding, some of these trainers require us to have more than just one person in order to make it to here.
Why can't they ride your horses?
Trainer's gonna come and say, it takes me an hour to come from Massachusetts, and for one lesson-
No, 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 I, I, no, I, I understand that, but, but what, what, you, you, you have four horses on your property, why can't the people getting training ride the horses?
They're competing their own horses, and they want to work with a great trainer to help on their horse.
No, horses that are on property are capable of doing such movements.
And not responsible.
Exactly.
To individuals.
So, they don't wanna drive my horse, they wanna ride their horse.
So, I mean, personally, I'm sympathetic to that, I, I mean, I, I don't know where we, where we draw the line necessarily.
That's just it, this is one of the slippery slope.
Right.
This is a slippery slope problem where-
The graduation party, there's parking on the, the side of the road, not that we even have that with the trailer.
But that's what, I mean, this is all-
Prop party.
Yeah.
This is all set up to work out these kinks. You know? And I mean, and this is, this is obviously information that's coming to our attention that nobody's brought up before.
And you guys wouldn't necessarily know that, because, you know, we deal with horses on a daily basis, you guys do know.
Well, we can put in some sort of fuzzier language that isn't an absolute prohibition, that says, is mostly limited, or most, you know, not on a regular basis, or, or does it seem something?
You can't define a regular basis, you can't do that. We, we can't, we can't regulate.
I think it, Jerry, you're trying to be too fine line.
I, I think it's fine just the way it is. I brought it up, cause I wanted clarification of what it said, but I agree with-
So, then being fine the way it is, is making it so that we cannot better our education as riders, having a trainer come to our facility to teach us and advance our knowledge.
To advance your knowledge, yes ma'am, if it is your, if it is your personal horse, yes ma'am, you can.
But that trainer's not gonna come.
The trainer's not gonna come unless there's more people that will be with him.
It becomes commercial if you have more people coming. That's the definition of the commercial stable, the commercial equestrian stable.
I disagree with you on that, Rich, because they can, they can, that, that is the one piece of this that by your definition is not commercial. Milda is offering that service as a favor to her friends.
The definition of a commercial equestrian stable says the training may, through that point, is not-
But what I'm saying, your definition of commercial before, and that is any kind of money generating, income generating activity, this is, this is completely non-income generating activity.
It's not based on that, it's based on impact.
I know that, but I understand that, and that's-
Pay is the trainer.
Where's the, where's the equestrian stable?
No, it does.
Can I state something really quick, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we put such a note stating, you know, up to a certain amount of horses, so that we are able to do the up to, say, three or four, three horses? That way, cause most clinicians, or most instructors that are well-known around this area, and worth investing in, are gonna require at least three or four horses be part of a clinic to make it worth travel for them. So, can we make a addition to saying you can have up to three horses?
From my perspective, you will have to persuade the rest of the board, because my answer is no.
I don't know if I can be convinced of adding more language, it, that, that just starts adding more complexity to it.
I think it makes it more clear. I think it makes it more clear.
To, to you, but anybody else is looking at it, they're like, oh-
Because we don't wanna add more language, we have to be limited to our training and our knowledge.
I'm sorry, where's the definition of commercial equestrian stable?
It's right on the page.
The next one.
But where are the restrictions on, I'm sorry, where are the restrictions on?
Oh, I, I don't see those either, Chip.
And the restriction that Rich is talking about is right in-
No, no, where, where are the, what, what?
Like the standards that we said happen.
Where are the standards for commercial equestrian stable?
The driveway, and-
Oh, it's not, it's, it's in the zone.
Is that this, one, one fifty-nine, one sixty?
Yeah, it's in there, cause we're looking at, it's just another.
So, so, I, I, let, let's, let's look at what were, what restrictions would be imposed with the language that we have now, okay? So, it, it, they could, you can have riding lessons, massage shows, training. Uh, you have to have five acres of, five acres of land excluding hydroic soils and streams, but not wetlands, interesting standard there.
No, well, hydroic soils are wetlands. So, if we're done, if we're done.
I have it headed, okay. Uh, one, one equine per half acre boarded, on-site parking, one parking space or two equine boarded. Additional parking for shows and similar events, well, there's, so there's no, no imposition of parking. Drive, okay, driveways, driveway is, that's, that's a problem. Driveways is where you run into, run into the issue. Uh, because if, 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 if we're talking about a hobby farm, I am vehemently opposed to the idea of requiring something for the, that meets the, the three law, private requirements. I'm sorry?
It says two law.
The driveway design, if, if-
It says three law, right here.
On the commercial, on the commercial.
That's what I'm talking about, I'm, I'm saying, what, if, if, if we leave the language the way it is right here, Ted, for the equestrian stable, then what Milda and the other lady are discussing would kick them into equestrian facilities, and I wanted to look at, okay, what hardships does that impose? And I'm fine with that until I get to driveway design. And, and then, I think there's an unreasonable hardship, which takes me back to the original language and say, okay, now, now I'm motivated to try to-
Tweak it.
To, to come up with something that can, we, we have, the whole purpose of having the public come here and talk to us is to give us in, input on, on real life. I completely understand what they're, they're saying about a, a trainer and having a, a couple of friends. I also understand that if, if you're getting training in riding, you need to get the training and riding on your horse. And, and so, I was, I wasn't being facetious, Milda, but I, I, I was trying to, trying to make a point earlier. The, the, the problem I have, though, is I don't, I don't, I don't have a clue how to allow, so, so the, the issue is training of horses which are not boarded on the property, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So, if it's not for, so, commercial, for, for income producing purposes, the owner, and the owner is participating in the lessons?
Time out, cause code, the code enforcement officer can't, can't tell you, there, there, there are five horses being danced around in the pasture, and some guy from Massachusetts is directing the dance, the code enforcement officer has no way of knowing whether it's for, whether it's for profit, or it's just a friendly co-op, like what you described. There, there's no way you can enforce that.
Well, and I think ultimately, the enforcement is gonna come in where somebody were to try and, you know, have multiple trailers sitting there on a, on a parcel that's not, not appropriate for it, and there's gonna be a complaint from either traffic, or-
A neighbor.
Neighbor, or who knows what. So, I would, I, can I, can I propose something very quickly?
Sure.
That would give us something to talk about? So, I would, I would propose we tweak that sentence to be, you know, all that training, provided the training is limited to those horses being boarded on the property, and, and no more than four additional horses. Or, or, something, I haven't thought it out well.
I, I, I would, let me, let me throw this out, how, what, what if you say that the training, train, training is limited to those horses boarded on the property, or a maximum of five horses? No. I have another thought.
Because if they're, if, if you've got eight, eight horses in an equestrian stable.
If you have, if you have eight horses in an equestrian stable, and some of them are being boarded, and then you, you have, you, you have plenty of flexibility to have your boarders anticipate in the training.
Right. So, it's accommodating the extra-
Would work with me here, Milda, I'm trying to get to the end.
I know, I know, but, so-
I got-
Go ahead.
Can I throw my two senses, is provided, training is limited to those equestrians that are on the property.
No, that doesn't work, cause you could bring forty horses on the property.
No, because you still have your number, you still have your number of ten.
No more than-
You still have your number of ten.
Oh, but you wouldn't be limited to the number that would be permitted otherwise, on the bottom?
You got ten, I mean, if you have eight, if you have-
Ten, ten is, if, if, if you've got training going on for ten people, it's not, in my mind, that's way outside the bounds of hobby farm.
Well, unless eight live there, and you just have two truck-ins, you know, that, if, if eight are living there.
If eight are living there, then you can have the trainer come in for eight.
But, but, but that's not really, because at the upper levels, it's very hard.
No, no, stop and listen to what I, what I've just proposed.
I understand, but I, you know, but you have to listen to what you're saying apart-
Yeah, but you have to listen to what I'm saying as far as.
Time out, please. Listen to what I proposed. I proposed that training be limited
Yeah.
to those horses being boarded on the property or a maximum of five.
So the, the day's lessons could not exceed five? Is that how you read that?
That's how I would read that.
That's how I would read that.
There, there would be no more than five horses being trained at one time.
Well, then you have the, well, at one time, I mean, you have the problem of the person that has got the eight and four people.
You got three, can't play.
Yeah.
Right.
No, that's not, that, that, that's not the way, you don't, you, you can, if, if you have ten horses, you can have ten.
Ten can have lessons.
You can, ten, ten can have lessons. But if there are outside horses coming in, the total number of horses being trained cannot exceed five.
How are you gonna count that?
How are you gonna count that? You, you can count the number of horses in the field, is part of why.
It's best. Gentlemen, this is mission creep, that is best.
Okay.
So Marty, um, Jamie, your, your thought was the one I think that worked best.
Well, I'm just trying to, I'm come up with, if, if you have the space to do it and presuming you've got adequate facilities to have, you know, trucks and trailers and everything come in for additional, you know, to accommodate what, what you guys are characterizing as a, as a, you know, small training event with a limited number of outside horses without it being some grandiose affair that's gonna create a nuisance.
Yeah, I think that, that works for me because it's, um.
I'm sorry, I, I, I'm.
So I would just limit it to the, the number of horses, the number of horses boarded plus no more than four additional non-boarded horses.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, but i- if you've got a farm that, that has, you know, let's say five, uh, uh, five own, you know, five owner horses.
Yeah.
Five boarded horses. And then you're talking about people, trailers coming in for how many more?
Four.
Four more trailers, commercial operation.
But there's not gonna be, but there's not gonna be trailers for the first five that live there.
But right, the first, the first ten are, are, you're not gonna have anything but a, a car showing up.
I understand that. You've got ten cars and four trailers and that, I, 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 I'm.
That's kind of.
It's not a hobby for me, I think.
I really like the way Jamie's wearing it.
I'm, I'm seeing, I'm, I've had a sense with this all along that it's, it's a hobby, but what if, I, I'd like working on hot rods. And I have five hot rods, each have a garage bay, but I, I need to bring in, I need or I wanna have a few more bays in there for, for friends who are in there. And then it's, 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 I don't know, I'm looking at a hobby as a horse, a horse as a hobby, but so are other things. And we, we don't allow hobbies really to be opened up to to anything but personal use. And I don't know if I allow that word term allowed, but, but a hobby to me is, is personal use.
I guarantee you, if I had a, a six bay garage on my house.
Yeah.
Just picture it. I had a six bay garage on my house.
Yeah.
And I wanted people to bring over, and my enthusiasm was for hot rods. And I came over and I got my buddies together and we sat in our garage and tinkered with our hot rods.
Our carburetors, carburetors.
And.
Co-carburetors.
Nobody, I mean, until we pulled them out and were, I mean,
Fine tuning them.
blowing down the road at, you know, a hundred and twenty decibels, nobody's gonna say anything.
And that's, I, I feel that way about, I feel that way about this, that no one's really gonna say anything, but and I, I was gonna say, well, just do it, no one's gonna know, but you wanna follow.
I, I, I know, you all understand how it works, so we're not creating something that found a fail.
Right, yeah.
Because this is a very common way, let me just tell you a couple of things. You, this town of Rondell has had two very accomplished dressage riders, Ashley Perkins and Susan Giacomo.
And Andy Shaw too.
Pardon?
Andy Shaw. Turn around, she turned around also was from the.
Yeah, Andy Shaw. And so we have a history here of having some very good riding, um,
Candidates.
Professionals. And they got their starts here and they couldn't have done what they've done if they were limited in any fashion like this. Because you have, as you go up the scale, it's just like gymnastics or ice skating or eegales, you've gotta get better and better instruction. And you can't do that if you're, if you're limited in that way. It's, it's much easier to have a trainer come to your house in his little car than it is to get in your trailer and go to Massachusetts, given the weather, et cetera, et cetera, you're needed. So it's, it's, um, it's a reality.
That's true, you also have people who don't have arenas.
So what, what, I, I'm sorry, what, what's, what is, what is the problem with, I, I realize the numbers are arbitrary, but what's the problem with it, it's, if the number of horses being trained is limited to the, to either the it's, it's either the horses boarded on the property or if there are horses which are not boarded on the property, no more than five being trained at a time.
Well, that I understand better. I didn't, don't look, I understood what you're saying. So if I had eight horses and I had Adam coming in to teach and that all the people who are boarding there could have a lesson? Because they just all live there and there are no trucks and trailers and there's no.
No, no, what I'm saying is it, it, it.
Somebody could have to say they couldn't have a lesson because it's modified. That doesn't make any sense.
No, if you have someone who comes in eight and has a lesson from eight to nine, that's one horse, and then a lesson from nine to ten, that's another horse. Say you have a truck in from ten to eleven, and then you have a boarder from eleven to twelve, and another truck in from one to two. You know, you're not necessarily having, you know, three horses.
That's certainly an awful lot, like a commercial operation.
That's a commercial operations.
How is that?
That's, that's.
But how's that different than the eight boarders coming to feed their horse every day? I mean, that, it's not generating any more traffic.
Yes, it is.
How?
I don't get it.
Trailers.
But if the trailer's leaving.
Not if the horses are.
If the horse is gone and the trailer's gone, how is that more traffic? Versus someone just coming in their car to ride their horse in their hour lesson, and then next you have a truck and trailer, but after an hour lesson, they're gone. And then, you know, another person comes in and rides and then takes the horse away. It's not like there's four trailers lined up like a horse show where they're staying for three hours.
Then whose hobby is it?
It's my hobby.
Mine.
It's your hobby and your horse. It's not your hobby with somebody else's horse.
But it betters our knowledge.
Improve me, that's what, yeah, that'll do. And.
It also betters your knowledge.
And, and there are costs and restrictions to everything.
And I just, I just threw out a, a proposal which, yeah.
Well, then make it, make it six. Because that.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion we leave the ordinance as it is. That's about where.
Do I, do I have a second for Mister Gannon's motion?
I want to, I mean, what is the, what is the downside?
I'm sorry, I, I, Jamie, I'm sorry, I, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second for the motion? Mister Gannon's motion. So, and will somebody? No, no second for Mister Gannon's motion?
Okay.
I, I can't.
I'm just. No, I, I understand.
Rich, and to be very honest, I was very close, but I want to, would want to understand if we were to keep the ordinance where it is, how does that impact people that, you know, are operating like these guys that just have a small?
But that's what we've been discussing for the past forty minutes. It's, and it's, we're not getting anywhere with that heavy trash.
And, and you know, and we, we've sat here and discussed things ad nauseam.
Yep.
That are less consequential, I think.
I, I won't argue that point. But at, at some point, we either have, we have to make a decision, we either, and, and we have to vote on something. And I'm saying, I, I think we should leave it where it is, so we should have a vote on that. If you all disagree, you all disagree and you shoot it down. That's fine. But at least we will have made some progress.
Okay, so your take, your proposal is to.
You should leave it just the way you can leave it.
This as written.
Correct.
Okay, so when I was, what I was within minutes of saying was what is the ramification if we leave the ordinance just like it is approved as of January eighth, two thousand eighteen? Just like it is. And these, this equestrian stable, that sort of, this, this gray area of, of equestrian boarding, ownership, training, everything else, just is not addressed. And we leave the commercial stuff, the, the bona fide, high-end, commercial stuff, equestrian centers. And we leave that and we leave the lower-end hobby farm unregulated.
The way we have been discussing it, we are merging the two of these, we're, we're merging. Yes, we are. We are taking the definition and saying that, okay, granted, you don't do dressage, but you can do training for horses that you don't board on the property.
And, and.
And we're just morphing. This is the mission creep that I'm.
And I'm, I'm getting more and more to think we leave it like it is if you've got less than, if you've got ten horses or less.
Yep.
You pretty much aren't regulated by our ordinance.
It's not if you have ten horses or if you have less, it's if ten horses or fewer
I didn't want anything.
Are, are used for rentals, riding lessons, lessons, et cetera.
I like Jamie's idea. You know, just leave it a facility where no less than eleven and no more than thirty are used for rentals.
I'll leave it Jamie's.
I, I think that's a hole you can drive a truck through. I, I'm.
And that's why I'm.
Jamie is.
I, I don't understand.
Is that a motion?
I, I don't understand the objection to the, the, well.
To the limitation of five imports?
Yes.
But it's not five imports.
Not five imports.
That's the, that's, that's my, that's my objection.
It's five, it's five total if there's one import.
We need five total, one import. So you could have four, four horses boarded. If you bring in an import, you're restricted to five. But you're not restricted to five.
No, you, you can have ten horses on the property, but the training is limited to five, which can be any mixture of truck, what, what was the term you used?
Truck in.
It, 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 it could be five truck ins or it could be three truck ins.
Or even special.
Locals or.
Okay, I did not understand.
That was, that was my proposal, was that it be limited to five.
How do we even know?
Yeah, but say that's written that way and we decide that we want five horses at one time, and we all have five truck ins, and you have five horse trailers at one time. That's more of an issue. That's worse than what we're even trying to talk about.
I'm trying to come up with something that will accommodate your needs and is simple, that could be in, at least theoretically could be enforced.
So I think Jamie's.
I felt Jamie's did that, than no more than.
And, and ultimately, I think if, if they're boarding, you know, four or five horses, they're probably gonna have an adequate amount of space for trailers and things like that to come in and get off the road.
Well, if they're, we're gonna just require them to have adequate.
Right, and.
That's what.
I mean, you can put that caveat in there.
I don't have, my boarders aren't allowed to keep their trailers at my house.
But if you're bringing in, bringing in for a, for a training event.
Yeah, for a training event.
Then have a caveat that they would be adequate off-street.
Oh, sure.
Parking to accommodate trailers.
Should never be on the street.
Absolutely. It's not safe for the horse, horse, or the vehicle, and trailer. We're people operating it.
But you could, but, but you could, you could have ten, you, you, it, this, this is, it's bending the boundaries. And so that means that if somebody has a farm and they're permitted to have ten horses because they have five acres in the, in the R four, they could have ten trailers show up and, and run a, a training session. That, that's, that's. Milda, stop, please. You're interrupting me and I don't appreciate it. The, the, and now I lost my train of thought. Uh, the, the I, unless I misunderstood, Jamie, that would be permitted the way.
Say that scenario again.
The, the facility has, it, it, it has five acres, there are ten horses boarded there, but the, I, I think the way I heard what you said was they could have ten horses come in from outside and, and get a, get a lesson. What I've been missing.
Uh, I, I had limited that up to four.
Four truck ins, four truck ins.
And I'm fine with that.
My, my, yeah, my thought was to limit it to a, a small amount of truck ins, but that, that could accommodate, you know, the some off-site people, horses.
Would that be, would that be four a day?
Could be four an hour.
No, no, no.
I don't think it would be four an hour.
It would be four at any one point.
Yeah, I think it could be four a day. Yeah.
And, and if it's more than that, then you'd be, then you'd bump the next one up. But I, I just think the enormous hardship of having to leave the driveway or do those things just to have three people.
Ultimately, I'm, I think we.
Ted, stop it.
We, we have to find something to be able to either move forward or we don't. And until we run into a scenario where somebody is abusing it and they're, they're treating it like a commercial event instead of, you know, how these guys are, are describing it, which is, I mean, what would, off the top of your head, two, three, four times a year? That you would have a trainer in, more, I'm.
Once a month.
Once a month.
Okay.
How about three? No more than three.
Times a month?
No, no more than three truck ins.
We, we're try, we're trying to make up language for, for something that, that is for a, a special use.
For mission group.
But the thing is about a very specialized area, you have to where it's not clear.
I know, but, but it's so.
This area is very specialized and you can't just sort of gloss over it.
There's so, so many loopholes to this. It could be, it could be every day a trainer's coming in and, and you have five, five trucks coming in, five trucks.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're absolutely, I, I'm sorry, I, I hadn't thought about that. You're absolutely right with that.
And, and I'm just, I'm just looking at the unseen consequences here. I, 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 I would feel all right with just not even addressing it. I, I don't know if that would get them.
Stop.
Trying.
That's not reasonable.
Okay, I'll leave it alone.
More likely to just leave it alone too. I don't know how legitimate.
Well, I, I, I feel that we need, I, I, I feel that we need to have the equestrian stable defined. We can't have just a, a black hole for a facility where ten or fewer horses are used. Because that, that could be, you, you could have somebody who had three acres in, in the R four, and they could be bringing ten horses in a, a, a day.
I, I have a, a suggestion. Could we just leave out anything about training? Pull the word training out of there?
Or use the word special training?
No, just boarding, breeding, personal use, then riding rigs, paddocks, corrals, just leave training out.
No, 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 because she, no, they, they need, no. Obviously, they have a desire to.
Don't they, but, but let them do the training. That's, that might be part of boarding. Maybe that's what, maybe we can just call it part, part of boarding or, or breeding. You, you wanna, you wanna leave the training in there.
Why?
But to follow your point.
You wanna permit it.
Because you wanna permit it. If it's not, if it's not expressly allowed, it's expressly prohibited.
Quintet deputal.
So we can't say, we have to say training is allowed. To, to your point, take out the sentence af, the rest of the sentence after that. Provided the training is limited to those horses being boarded on the property. You just simply say, training.
That, that would work to me, for me.
That's what I suggested.
No matter how, how much language we come up with, it's still, it, we can't solve it. There, there could be five per day all year long.
We can give Washington DC a run for their money on a swamp.
I, I like that, Rich.
I suggest that.
Going right out of there, that clause.
I mean, I think.
Okay, let me, let me refine that just a little bit. So we, we follow the same language as equestrian stable commercial where it would say a facility where I, I'm, I'm heading back to six, I'm afraid, but a, a facility where ten or fewer equines are used for the purposes of boarding, breeding, personal use, or training.
I think you're getting a soft track from what.
I think you're getting us off track from what Rich just said. I think if we go back to, let's, let's talk about pulling that clause out, that one about provided training is limited to, that point being boarded on the property. Would be any problem just pulling that out of there?
You have to leave the word "training" in.
Yeah.
Leave the word "training" in, but take out the.
I mean, and that sort of plays into, I mean, it opens it up more. But then if we, you know. Essentially have irresponsible equestrian stable owners that want to abuse that, then we know that we've got to come in and ratchet it down.
Yeah, and I don't see really too much abuse to happen at this time.
I don't think there would be a lot of abuse to it.
No, I don't either.
My problem is, is looking at it going, we keep having mission creep on everything that we do. We keep pushing it a little bit further. There, we get to the point where there's no difference between, with the exception that the commercial can offer dressage and broil.
In my opinion, the first people in this town are extremely knowledgeable and extremely honest, good people who are not gonna go and do something that's gonna cause.
We trust you, we just don't know the next person.
No, I understand, but I don't think that we have to spend so much time with tiny little easy things when we could just have a generalized statement that just states, like Jamie was saying, that we can have truck-ins.
No disrespect to the lawyers in the room, but lawyers are great for nitpicking the little it-bitty pieces and statements to get it to mean something other than what it was originally intended. Look at what we, they do in Washington DC all the time.
So, so the proposal is to end the first sentence of the definition of equestrian stable to simply end at "personal use or training," period?
Correct.
That's what's on the table.
Yeah, okay, I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. How does, how does the rest of, oh, the next sentence?
Motion.
The next sentence should be "riding," capital R.
Correct, riding rigs, paddocks, that's it.
It says "ring," not "ring."
Tom, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, good.
Riding rigs.
Okay, so.
Says riding rings up above.
Let me, let me read my.
Just cancel out, "is limited to equestrians being boarded on property." Scratch that out and everything is covered.
So, so let me, let me read it. "A facility where ten or fewer equines are kept for the purposes of boarding, breeding, personal use, or training," period. Riding rigs, paddocks and corrals, bridle trails, and pasty may be components of equestrian stable operation.
Yes, I'm sorry. Did, did we keep the limitation of six for R1 or was that?
That, that comes down below, doesn't it?
Just dealing with the definition.
Yep. Just the definition.
Yep.
No, we had ten.
And then R1 has ten with an acre for horse.
Yeah, that, that's elsewhere, so just ten.
Correct.
Okay, I have a motion to have a side, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so we have, we opened the barn door to training, Milda.
But when I make it to the Olympics, you'll all be so glad.
Prevented zone.
Where are we going?
The Olympics.
The Olympics.
Oh, nice, okay.
Hold on, guys, it's, it's almost, let's move along. Equestrian stable, I have a question about zoning, several questions about zoning and where things are permitted by zone. Townhouse Center. Why, why are we even considering stables of any kind in the Townhouse Center district?
I could see an equestrian stable, if we're gonna allow it in R1, I could see allowing it in the Townhouse Corner District.
How big is the Townhouse Corner District, isn't it tiny?
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter how big it is. If we're gonna let you put it in a, in a one-acre residential zone, you can put it in the Townhouse Corner.
Okay, what about the commercial stables? Should that be in Townhouse Corner?
No, I don't think that should.
Okay, well.
So we have that now as a.
But it is now.
It is now, so, okay.
How about your gateway?
Hold, hold on, now.
But the Townhouse Corner was, is more of a transitional zone, right?
Correct, yep.
So why would.
It also gets banned.
Why wouldn't, you know, a, you know, sort of the transitional equestrian thing be allowed there? Well, I mean, it's sort of the in-between of a big equestrian center versus the hobby farm of an equestrian stable.
Because of the lot sizes and the existing zone.
Jamie, Jamie.
So rather than go through the issue of trying to amend that part and looking to, to take away people's rights to have a commercial equestrian stable in Townhouse Corner, leave it as conditional and let it naturally never occur.
Because it's inside.
Okay.
But that's not how things work. When things are, when, when something is permitted and an applicant comes in and they provide all those studies and drawings and everything else that, that, that we require, we never say, "No, you can't do that" because we don't feel like letting you.
And I don't think in the Townhouse Corner, there's any compelling reason not to.
I, I do because my understanding of Townhouse Corner is it's supposed to be a small commercial district and you would be eating up a chunk of land in, in that district. It would be tied up as a, as a stable and it wouldn't be available to be developed the way in a, in a.
Well, someone might, I would say, might be foolish to, to utilize that property there in a business district for something that, that needs that much land. And I think there's only one possible big enough to really have.
And that is a barn with, a farm with a barn. It's a beautiful riding ring and they have a lovely facility there.
In the Townhouse, are you sure that's in the Townhouse Corner District? Because it's not, I don't think.
Well, I do remember when I opposed the boundary lines of the Townhouse District because it came beyond the Grange Hall. It came all the way to the next one, to Meadow Brook Drive or whatever, and that includes that beautiful yellow farm across from the cemetery. They have a barn out back, three forestalls and a riding ring and the whole bit. And so that's precisely the reason.
Is that in Kegman Port?
No.
No, that's in the Rondo.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
It's in the Townhouse.
It's off Rundle Road, actually. You know where the cemetery is, where the Grange Hall is. They have like a little art gallery there or something. But they've got a beautiful barn and a riding ring and a whole. It was where Karen.
I don't see the housing, I think they do, it's so unlikely to happen.
Okay, fine. Couple, couple other questions. The BI District, why are, why are we prohibiting? The BI District, there can be residences, correct?
No, only, only existing, the BI District was, was something that they planned where basically said you can't build any more residents except for residents on an existing lot of record, that no more.
For securitys.
Okay.
No, it was for securitys, just because they wanted reserve, limited business.
But I, but I have a residence in the BI District, why can't I have two horses?
You can have two horses.
It says X.
Yeah, but.
That doesn't mean you can't have two horses.
That doesn't mean you can't have two horses.
I can have two horses of my own. Can't have, okay.
Right.
All right. Okay, is there anything, anybody, oh, um, the, I'm sorry, there. Okay, so we've got the parking space.
I don't remember why we said the equestrian centers couldn't go into B2.
I think we wanted to keep it for something, so the equestrian center.
Okay.
What, can it go in R3? If you have nothing.
Sorry?
It's X in R3 also.
My recollection is the R3 is very comparable to R2.
It is comparable.
And we just.
The, the, our, the comprehensive planning committee would like us to merge R2 and R3. There is not a convergence of thought about how that convergence should happen, but it's important to us to keep the rules for R2 and R3 the same.
So you don't have a bunch of pieces.
So that we don't, I, I, I want very much to avoid a situation where we give somebody a right today and then three years from now we do something to comply with the comprehensive plan, which takes their right away. Now, is there any lighting? Lighting issues, ladies? Any comments on the lighting? Because I would think in Maine, given how short the days are in December, that that might be a problem.
So I read that to be, "There shall be no outdoor lighting, blah, 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 so as to disturb adjacent residential properties." So if it was reasonable, it's not on at eleven at night. It's no different than my neighbors at the golf course, practice field, who have those awful huge lights out there. So, you know, if it's reasonable and not bothering people disturbing residential properties, it seems like it would be okay. I didn't read that to be a blanket prohibition.
Okay.
Would you?
No, I, I didn't, I just wanted to make sure that.
I don't think anybody would have the lights on at, you know, eleven at night or something like that. That's.
You might.
It's a mullet tendency to have predators.
Well, there you go.
I mean.
But not, you're not out there like riding at eleven at night.
No.
For security reasons, more than that, play reasons.
Six at night, you might be after work, for sure.
Is there anything else we need to, do we need to beep this dead horse anymore tonight?
It's a dead cat. It's on life support right now.
Okay, can we put it in the iron lung and move on to animal husbandry or agree to a jern, I don't care what.
Either that or jern and say, "Goodnight."
That was part B.
The animal husbandry.
I haven't had a chance to read up on it.
Okay, I, I read some of the information that the town planner came up with and I wanted to take about three steps back. And we're, when we're talking about domestic animals on a bigger property for zoning purposes, we're concerned about noise, right? We're concerned about, well, my first concern is groundwater pollution. That, that's number one. Probably odor and insects are tied for second place. And then, then third would be noise, right? So, is it, just trying to think of all animals as the same. What, what else do we need to worry about?
I would, I would throw surface water in as well as groundwater.
I'm, I'm sorry, okay. Not having your background, I think it's the same. But yes, point taken, yeah. What, let's just say water, okay?
Sure.
Water pollution to me is number one. One of the things, one of the tables Ted said is that I thought was very interesting was it just, how many pounds of manure a day are produced by different animals? And I realized that chicken droppings are guano, I think it's chicken. Chicken guano is significantly, it has a much greater, a pound of chicken guano has a whole lot more impact on the environment than a pound of cow manure.
That would make sense.
And another thing that I read that Ted provided talked about different soil types. And if, if you, if you're, if you're talking about the soil on my side of River Road, it's this abominable clay that, that dump trucks disappeared into and a couple of cars and, I mean, it's just unbelievable. That wouldn't support as much manure as, I'm not sure there is any really great soil on Rundle, but surely somewhere, somebody has a nice pasture. It's just not one of mine. But the, I, I guess where I'm heading is, I'm wondering if instead of, instead of trying to have the, the, this complicated table of, well, maybe, maybe we have to have this, but. I guess what I'm saying is, I, I think our goal should be to eliminate as much as possible both groundwater and surface water contamination first. And second, odor and insect pest control. And third, the noise. Does that seem like a good starting point, guys?
It's fair to me, yeah.
All right, so Ted, your, your notes indicated that you thought we needed to make this even more complicated.
No, what I thought we needed to do was, was to actually make it more of a listing from the standpoint of carrying capacity. Because our current system, as we all know, has, uses the USDA animal unit, which is based on pounds, and it's based on the amount of forage or pastures that, that certain bovines need to have in order to survive. It's basically range management. That's where animal units really came from. And our current ordinance requires, allows five animal units or a thousand pounds of animal, five thousand pounds of animals in the residential district. And unlimited amounts in the R4 district.
Okay, so, so, so five thousand, so that's twenty-five hundred chickens.
In the R1 district.
That's.
I don't think so.
With absolutely no limitation, there's no capacity on an acreage basis. That's what our current ordinance does. So all our residential district, you could literally have a chicken house right next to you in the, you know, in the R2 district. And that is, meanwhile, you only could have, what, four or five dairy cows? Not even that, you know. About four, four dairy cows, you know, maybe a calf on a hundred acres, you know. So it's not, our ordinance is not based on, on populations. It's based on weight and it's just unworkable, unusable. And we're lucky, we haven't had a disaster. I think we discussed this last time, Jamie brought up the chicken houses and, and piggeries as a, as a real concern. And it is always a concern because when you think it's not gonna happen at Rundle, that's when it happens. So the question is, how do we, how do we come up? And then we said, okay, we've, we've got a density of what, just like with horses. We've got a pretty good idea of density, it's of how, how many animals per acre is reasonable, is considered to be reasonable in the agricultural community. And it varies all over the place, but that comes from a whole bunch of different sources. And they're pretty consistent. The problem is, even if we use that, that you can't add more than two, two horses per acre or, and four, four llamas per acre and so forth. The problem is, what happens if somebody loads up one acre with all of those animals? We don't, there's a way that we've got to keep the, you know, the carrying capacity in there. So that's why we're kind of redefining an animal unit and assigning this animal unit that's not based on, on, that's not based on the poundage or the weight, but it's based on the pastures or the carrying capacity of the land, general carrying capacity of the land. And then dividing up, and then so that you would specify in the R1 zone, you've got to have one animal unit per acre. Or in the R2 zone, you have two animal units per acre. And then put whatever combination. And then put whatever combination you want to.
Quick question for you. Why, why, okay, I'm looking at this table, this animal density table.
Right.
Why is there an ascending scale for sheba goats and an ascending scale for llamas and for chickens? And there is no limit on rabbits, but bovines are two per acre no matter what zone they're in.
And what do you call them, bovine?
Cows.
Why don't we just say cows?
No, no, but we, we want bovines so it covers oxen and water buffalo and buffalo.
Okay.
Before I get hairy. Because the amount of manure that's produced and the amount of, and, and the, the carrying capacity on an acreage basis, you know, they're smaller, smaller than a small animal.
But I, I thought, I thought you were, I thought you were saying that, that, that the, you, you looked at the carrying capacity from a foraging standpoint as opposed to which?
From, from my perspective.
It's not foraging, they're, they're, basically that's the standard that people are using for density.
From my perspective, maybe based on.
Okay.
You were to look at this and use chickens as an example. You know, to, without directly saying, you can't have a large scale chicken operation in the R one, two, or three, you effectively limit it such that it's gonna, it's gonna keep it to a, a, you know, fairly personal type of level, whereas at a larger scale in the R four may be allowed.
Yeah. Okay, but if, if I, so, so if I have a ten acre lot in the R one district, I can have two hundred chickens?
Well, yeah. Well, until you go over to table, you go over to table nine, three, five, two, that's animal units per acre. And that's where it gets, that's where it gets complex, yeah. That's where you start saying, okay, we don't want that in this district, we can't have two hundred and fifty chickens.
This says you can if you have ten acres of land, it's still ten per acre.
But it's not fifty on one acre, is it? This is where it gets complex, guys.
Well, no, this, this, this doesn't, I, I, it's, it's like there's three different sets of rules here, I don't, what?
So we have to spread your chickens out and not have them all in one house?
No, I think what, what we're looking at in the, in the first chart, correct me if I'm wrong, the first chart appears to be what we currently allow, animal density by zoning districts, so we established the density for what they would be. But if you go over to, to the, the next chart, nine, three, five, one, simply lists out the equip, animal equivalencies. And nine, three, five, two says, this is the way it would translate out in terms of, so we actually have the, the choice between two charts, nine, three, five, two and nine, three, five, one.
Nine, three, five, one was the chart that, that we came up with basing, basing it on what's the, the carrying capacity average on assessment that's being made. And there's not a lot of difference between those two.
There's not a lot of difference.
I think they're alternatives.
Yeah, the other one is the alternative, thank you. The alternative is saying.
The third page is yet another alternative?
Sorry?
The third page, which is nine, three, five, two is maybe another alternative.
I think nine, three, five, two is basically the result that would happen if you, if you took, you know, that's, that's the one you'd actually put in there. Nine, three, five, one was showing how you came to the animal units. And then nine, three, five, two is how do we, you know, how many animal units do we have for, for each thing in, in various districts? I think that sort of boils down. The problem being, we still are gonna have the problem with chick, with poultry. Poultry is always gonna be a problem unless you say, okay, in this district, it's a maximum number of chickens, even though you can have a carrying capacity of so much. And in the R one district, we're saying you, you only get a ten per acre or something like that.
Well, you could just add a, a simple, you know, limit, you know, a limit of fifty.
Yeah, you can have a limit of fifty.
I, I, I actually have a friend who has fifty chickens as a, he's not in a rundle, I'm sure he's not in compliance with his town's ordinance, but they, they actually have a, a hobby farm with all sorts of animals, but it includes fifty chickens, which is, that's a lot of chickens.
Fifty is a lot, that's a lot of manure. And the problem with fifty chickens, they're gonna tear up, if you're free ranging, well, there's no such thing as free ranging, whether you're guarding them, you need to.
You have, you have a good, uh, tick control.
So, so I'm, I'm looking at this and, and you all know that, that I have a distinct problem with it. This definition is a commercial definition and we're gonna allow it in the R one. No. I don't believe the R one should have businesses in the district. It's a residential district. And it's supposed to be a residential district.
Rundle was all residential at one time, I know, before you started putting zoning in.
The Complan wants us to have the R one as a high density district. I see no way this side of God's green acres where I could say, you have ten acres of land, so you can have a hundred chickens in the R one. Doesn't work for me.
Says two.
Doesn't work for me to have twenty pigs in the R one either, on the same ten acre lot. Doesn't, R, it doesn't work for me in the R one. If you wanna talk about the R two, the R three, the R four, okay, doesn't work for me in R one.
Well, it's not. I'm, I'm sorry, bear, bear with me a second, I'm, I'm looking at, at nine point three point five, that, this, this is horrible, it's the, the overlapping thing, but the first table.
Do you really?
I don't, I don't understand, I don't even understand what this is saying. For, for pigs, two per acre, not to exceed nineteen pigs?
In the R four.
So you can't have more than nineteen, so you, you can't have a commercial pig operation in R four.
There are a lot of decisions that we have to make in here. This is, look, this is just the first blush, there's two, two alternatives here. One is basically saying, this is what you can have, the, the first one, which was table three, five, one, which is what was proposed last time. And then when we went over, we said, well, when I went over, I said, this isn't gonna work, because I could have, you know, I could have all these animals on, on a one acre of land, I could have two horses, I could have two horses, two bovines, two, you know, three sheep, you know.
In combination?
Yeah, all together, by the same way.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, all right, all right.
That's the problem.
I, I, okay.
And the alternative two was saying, okay, how do we come up with a way of making sure that you, here's a number of animal units you can have and put it together any way you want to, you know? You wanna have a couple of sheep, you know, you wanna have, you wanna have all bovines, fine, you can't have, you know, it's basically, the intent is to create a ceiling of some sort. And this is kind of tough stuff. So you have, what, what you can realistically do by the, by the carrying capacities, then we hit the reality of what do you want in some of these districts, you know?
Okay, I'm sorry, I said, well, I, now, I'm, I'm sorry, I did, I was slow, I didn't understand that this was two alternatives for the same, same.
So can we just get rid of the first table?
Excuse me, please.
Not allowed to talk?
Not, not right now, no. So, we're, the, the first two are alternatives. And I, and now I understand why, why we're talking about animal units. Okay. So, but what, what is, what is this table nine point three, five, two? Is that yet another alternative approach?
No, that's taking, it, it's kind of like taking table nine, it's like taking nine, three, five, one and, and, and then basically modifying it for the various individual districts, because not all districts are gonna be the same.
Okay, all right, so, so we, so we've gone, we, what this is, is, is an evolution of the concept.
Exactly.
So, so there would be, we, we, we end up with, this is what you're proposing.
I would, I would, yeah, I would propose.
As a starting point for our conversation.
You'd still, you would still need this in order to determine what am I gonna put on my land? You'd get one animal unit, right?
Sorry, what?
What table nine, three, five, one does is it defines how mu, how much of each one of these species is in animal units, an equalized.
No, I, I, I understand that.
And this is what the Complan committee wanted us to do, they wanted us to take animal units and do it by species. So.
Okay.
So that means, correct me if I'm wrong, if they're doing by species, I could have two cows, two horses, two goats, two pigs, six llamas, twenty chickens on the same.
Yeah, pretty much, Marty.
So I could have a real farm? Is that right?
Can I ask a trivial question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Why, why are guinea hens prohibited?
Because they're so loud.
Thank you.
They are obnoxious. They're awful creatures.
Almost as bad as peacocks.
I, I know about, I know about peacocks.
They're so useless.
They're equi, they're equivalent to peacocks, except they'll fly too.
Guinea hens are actually not.
They are, the only good they can do is eat ticks, so you got chickens for that.
That's it.
Well, guinea, guinea hens are.
You do not need a guinea hen.
Guinea hens are great for eating ticks, also cows.
But your neighbors won't want to shoot them, it probably would.
Absolutely.
Prior practice, you know, I really want, just free to.
I, I asked a question. Okay, so no, no minks, no ferrets, no guinea hens?
No, that was in the R one. And these are questions I wanna ask you guys, Marty. There are, you can guarantee you that somebody's gonna come in and say, I wanna raise ferrets, or I wanna raise me, rich chickens.
Or, or, does this mean I can't have a pet ferret?
No, this is commercial.
I'm just saying, this is what people are gonna ask.
Right, exactly.
When you say, when you have ferrets as prohibited, you mean I can't have that?
Maybe what we should do is just say, non-traditional or by planning board, you know, conditionally used by planning board, and if we ever run into it, then we deal with it on an as, you know, as individual case basis, which is probably the way we're gonna do it, because I can't find.
For some of these, anything.
Exotics.
Right.
Well, we're not even getting into aviaries, you should.
What, what do you, what does the phrase calf four months to wean, what is, what does that say?
That's basically the animal unit for a calf.
Is, is that the calf that, four, four months old till the time he's weaned?
Yes.
Or, or, or is that supposed to be?
Well, you're.
I would imagine so.
You're a cowboy, you tell me, because that's the way it was in the USDA manual, so I'm not quite sure.
That's just retarded.
Well, that's, that may be, that's USDA. That's what they have, four months to, to wean.
Why, why don't we just, you know, cap, cap up to six months or eight months?
When is a calf weaned?
We deal with cubs.
Chip?
Can we folks sort of like, maybe, maybe one species and see how, just how we'd work it out and.
Yeah, I, I like that, I like that idea, because how about we chase through chickens?
Okay.
Because.
They're obnoxious, roll out and they're stinking.
Well, chickens aren't as bad as guinea hens.
No, no, I'm just saying in general.
Not as bad as the.
And out here, they're great.
I have about forty of them and they are a lot better. My rooster is obnoxious, but my other ones are fine.
Okay.
You got a lot of eggs, Tony.
I'm, I'm sorry, can, can we, can we please clip into the conversation of the board members for right now? You've, you've been helpful and your input's been appreciated and everything, but, but there are times for your input and times to, to let us sort through things before, okay? So we start with chickens.
Yeah.
And the carrying capacity is supposed to be, is, is fifty to one hundred per acre.
You can pick one, we do not want that.
A hundred chickens on one acre of land is, is.
See, they're two fifties, depends on whether they're layers or, or, or meat ones, too.
Okay.
And we're not gonna allow that many, you know that, right?
Well, I, we're, we're just talking about animal, the, the, this, the first table is the animal units table.
And Marty asked a question.
Yeah.
He said, can you give me an example? And I would say, let's say you've got a, a, a one acre farm, just for simplicity's sake, okay? And, and in the R one district, and it says, you can have one animal unit. And these are all hypotheticals, I haven't set these all up yet, because I keep going through scenarios and it works sometimes, and times I, sometimes I don't. But let's say, all right, let's say it's a two acre farm, but, and you can have, that means you can have two animal units. And then you go and say, well, what does that mean?
Well, you can have four animal units. Right? Two, two acres is.
No, an animal unit, an animal, I'm just saying, let's say in, in the R one, it's one, one animal unit per acre, okay, of land, just like it says up there.
Okay.
And if you, let's just go to table nine, three, five, one, just for, for giggles, because that's, that's the most complete one. I mean, that means that.
I know.
Just let me, let me keep, so we have a lot, two acres, uh, two animal units, that means you can have four bovines on those two acres. Or you could, you know, mix it up and have, well, let's see, I can have eight sheep on there, or I could have one bo, one, one, one milk cow and I can have, you know, four sheep, you get to mix and match any way you want to, you get to those two animal units. So goats, you could have, you know, six goats and, and, and two cows.
My question just makes it.
I don't, I don't understand this, this animal unit concept at all.
So do we, do we, just because the, the carrying capacity can be one animal unit doesn't mean we have to allow that much. I, I think, I'd rather, not even think about the, the animal units and just what do we, how many chickens belong to two acres in the R one zone? That's where I'm at.
I, from, from a commercial point of view, none.
No?
From a residential point of view, the guy next to me has chickens and pigs, they don't bother me, but he's not growing them for commercial purposes, doing it for himself.
You know, is, is this only for commercial though?
Yes, this is only for commercial.
This is only for.
Okay, then I, I agree with you, Rich, it, it, let them have, let someone have chickens for their own personal use and their family, friends, but, but.
It's not.
In R one, we're not allowing other businesses.
Well, we already have existing farms in R one. Give you an example. Pam Jo. Okay? Yep. There's an example right there.
But that doesn't mean we should add more into the, the R one. There are farms that exist in the same way in which we have contracted yards that exist in R one. We're not adding more into that zone. We're recognizing the fact that they exist and saying, okay, that's what we're gonna have.
Well, but what about that, what about the, that historic farm that we were talking about earlier?
Swicker?
Yeah.
Is it being used as a farm?
It has been until he decided to die.
Every piece of land around here has been used as a farm at one point or another.
Yes.
But that's a very, what I'm saying is that's a very suitable piece for a farm.
It's also not in the R one, it's in the gateway.
No, it's not. I'm a roller crow.
Swicker's on roller crow.
It's far enough, it's, it's far enough.
I'm thinking of the, the horse farm that Milner was talking about earlier.
Half of it's already gone. Half of it's been divided in one of the family, they've got a subdivision in there, family division, okay? So half of it's gone. The, the, the cleared area up top is what's for sale, thirteen acres or something like that, fourteen acres. So, you know, this is the deal with, with farming and, this is the deal with the issue of farming in a rundle. There are, we have, we have areas where we have existing farms or areas that are dedicated for existing farms that are inside of our certain districts, certain zoning districts, including the R two. And the issue is, right now, we've got a system that really restricts that kind of dedicated farming from being profitable or, or being an effective farm. And one of the goals of the comprehensive plan and of this community has been to, we're practical or we're reasonable to promote farming. And we have the conflict that we're experiencing all the time and we will continue to experience as the town grows and becomes more frankly suburbanized, and this town is suburbanized. as the town grows and becomes more frankly suburbanized, and this town is suburbanizing. We're gonna have a conflict between these kind of uses and residential uses. And also, the impacts of this become more and more apparent and more intense as the areas around it urbanize. Especially, as Jamie knows, with superficial water and groundwork. So the issue really is trying to come up with a way of balancing both of these kinds of uses in districts that are slated for growth. I mean, let's face it, the R1, R2, and R3 districts are growth districts. Those are slated in our complan as being growth districts, right now.
Who says the complan's right?
The town.
The town voted it in.
Well, that doesn't mean anything to the company, the town, anyway.
Marty, you know, you can make a good argument on that, but that the basis of operation that we have to work with is the dog. I know you, I know what you're saying, but I'm saying that's what we're supposed to try to adhere to. And so we've got to build a tall order. Unless we create, you know, as I've discussed before, unless we create floating zones, if this is a farm and it's got a totally different set of regulations for it, and you get designated as a farm if you meet these standards and you're a farm overlay district in the middle of wherever you are, which this board has rejected that concept. So we've got to come up with a way of allowing farming, commercial farming in these districts.
I don't know if we do, because just because there is some doesn't mean that's what should be there every place. I think, I think they do belong, just like the contractors always said. We understand they're there and they can work out, but we don't want them, they shouldn't be everywhere in the residential district because of noise, odors, and whatever, pollution, erosion. So I think, maybe it can be remedled. First, I think any existing one, they deserve to remain. But I don't know, I think we have to be careful not to just open it up to whatever goes.
Well, and I think we need to be mindful of what some of the alternatives would be if we limit some of our agricultural operations and people then look to divest their land to subdivision.
Residential.
Good point, yeah.
Let's put it this way, twenty chickens is not gonna put the school in jeopardy.
Let me ask you a question. I don't, I'm sorry, this is going the approach. I don't, I don't quite understand what this animal unit. I'm sorry, this is, it. I think I understand the concept, but I don't understand the application here. An animal unit, it says two per acre, so that counts as one, so a cow counts as one animal unit?
No.
Is that correct?
No, what it says is, we have animal unit designations, and.
Okay, we need to improve the language here, and let's, Ted, why don't you and I work on that?
We can not use it at all.
Because, no, I really like the animal unit concept because of the situation where you, somebody's got five acres and they want to have three cows, three cows and twenty chickens and a couple of goats, pygmy goats and.
Gives you a way to handle.
You know, it's a way to combine and say, but I flipped to table nine point three point five, that's two. And the only one here that's using animal units is cattle, horses, sheep, and goats.
Right. Yeah, you know, it's playing around trying to get these things to apply and then modify them based on the limitations of these districts. And I wouldn't really focus as much on nine, three, five, two right now, I'd focus more on the predecessor, which is nine, three, five, one.
Which one?
Which is the first one, you know, on page two, I'd look at that. And what that does is that's saying, here's the normal carrying capacity is based on an acre. Think of an animal unit as an acre, and it's basically saying that these are the number, these are the kind of, for each one, this is the number of animals that you can have per acre. That's almost what it's saying. And so the animal unit, so, you know, each horse is one animal unit, or each half horse, I guess, is an animal unit.
Oh, that's.
Each sheep is point two animal units.
Do you understand where our confusion was? So, if you're looking at five point two.
Now, just focus, let's just focus on nine point three point five.
One.
One?
Right.
I don't, I don't understand, what the hell is one animal unit? We're saying that the carrying capacity is two per acres, two cows per acre. Why wouldn't that be two animal units?
If I understand this table correctly, I probably don't. It appears that one animal unit is two cows. So the cow is essentially a half an animal unit. And I say that because when I go down to sheep, it's, sheep are point two. So if you had four of them on an acre, that's the equivalent of having one animal unit.
Except that shouldn't be point two five.
It should be point two five. And so I'm not, that's what I think it's trying to say, but I'm not positive.
No, that is what it's saying, so maybe.
Then wherever it says bovines and horses, it should say point five.
That would probably make it easier.
So that it would make more sense.
Right, that does make sense.
Okay.
Because I was struggling, I think, the same thing.
Yeah, right, it should be point five.
And I could only figure that out when I went down through swine, which were point one, and you could have ten per acre. Oh, okay.
Yeah, and that's what it was. Basically, what happened is, is I started picking these and dividing them into one acre.
Right.
Is what happened. So each one of these is the same, okay? So, that's what the confusion is, so it should be point five.
Or should it be the opposite? I don't just saw that a cattle one would equal an animal unit. I thought that was.
In, according to USDA, yeah, a cow is one animal, so, because it's one thousand pounds. But we're, I gotta get off it, and apparently I got, I should have made the division there.
I think the division should be done the other way. I think it should be one per acre equals one animal unit, not.
That's exactly what we're saying.
Yeah.
Right.
So if you're allowed two per acre, it's half, cow is half an animal unit.
If you were to do another column. So if you were to do another column here, animal units per acre would be one. That's, and I think that might, I don't know if that's what.
That's what I was, what I'm thinking. I thought one per acre equals one animal unit for a cow.
Yeah, that wasn't the way I was interpreting it. I was interpreting it as an animal unit, a cow is a half an animal unit.
Yes.
I always, I always, I always thought that the basis of an animal unit started with the cow.
You're right.
They didn't start, let's make up a half unit and then see what works. That's a wicked big cow.
That's the way we've always done it in the past.
That's wrong.
As saying one animal unit, it's a cow.
It's right.
And maybe we should just come up with a better definition than animal unit, a better nomenclature than animal unit. Because that's the problem. I have the same problem. We all focus on a cow as being one animal unit, because that's what it is. In every other instance, because it's based on pounds, and one animal unit is a thousand pounds.
But in this case, this is based on foraging capability.
It's based on foraging on one acre.
Right.
That's feed themselves.
That's what it's based on, which is more applicable for our situation.
So we should change it to say foraging unit and not animal unit?
Or just carrying capacity.
Yeah. There, there.
Time out, guys. Why don't we throw out? I mean, the issue is carrying capacity, right?
Right.
Yep.
So, if, why can't we simply have the carrying capacity table? That you can have two cows per acre. That means if I have five acres, I can't have more than ten cows. I don't need.
That would simplify.
I don't need the animal unit concept at all.
Until you have multiple species.
Where you get multiple species.
It's where you get multiple species.
That's what the problem.
No, I think the solution to that is to say, can you have multiple species? Are we going to let you?
Of course you can.
Of course you have to.
You have to.
Really? In what world do you have to? A farm? In what world do I?
In the world of every farm, of every.
So, because I have ten acres of land, I can have ten cows, ten horses, forty sheep.
Right, no, that's what you're trying to prevent.
I agree.
That's what table nine, three, five, one does.
But.
First nine, three, three, five, one on page one, that's what it does. It does exactly what you worried about.
That's right.
That's why we have to go to a different definition of an animal unit, saying, here's the ma, here's what you get, Marty.
But we have, if you say that the, well, how do you work that out, though?
Why not just say, well, and that's where it creates the problem in terms of animal units. Because if you had ten acres, you could say, you can have ten animal units. Figure out how they're gonna be divided up by yourself.
Okay, so we just, okay, so we fix this. I know, frankly, I don't care if you want to change, multiply everything by two so that a cow is one animal unit. And you can have two animal units per acre.
Right.
Yeah, we could do that.
Do you follow me, Ted? If animal units traditionally are, you know, one animal unit is one cow.
I think that's much more intuitive than having a cow be a fraction, you know, having, what we think of, you know.
A cow or a horse.
One of the largest, larger ones being a fraction of an animal unit. Make that the baseline, as one.
And I think if we say you can have one animal, one animal unit per acre, or two animal units per acre, then whoever the farmer is gets to decide how he wants to buy that up.
Well, the whole intent is.
Okay, all right, but that's not what this table does.
That's true.
So, I understand, I now finally grasp what this table is supposed to do. But the next table.
Right.
Other than cattle, horses, sheep, and goats, throws it right out the window.
Well, because, and there, this is where we get the problem. If you have, if you have, let's say, swine, ten per acre, you've got ten acres, you can have a hundred swine in the R1 district. Is that what you want?
No, stop.
We can tweak it, though.
That's what I was trying to start to do in table two.
Ted, what we need to do is, we need to have one, we need to have a table which establishes how many animal units per acre there are in each of the districts, okay?
Right.
So, you would, and that's a simple table. And then you would have species-specific limitations, which are overrides, they're on top of it.
That's what this table's starting to do, and it has.
Yeah.
Right.
The intent is that these are overrides.
Yeah.
For certain species that are known to be a problem situation.
So if I look at.
Rabbits shouldn't even be here. Rabbits are an indoor creator or species. They're done inside the barn. You don't free-range rabbits. So the whole idea of coming in with rabbits per acre doesn't work, you know, it just doesn't work.
So when I go through here and I look in the R2 district, it's that for swine, it says two per acre, not to exceed four for property. So it doesn't matter how big the property is in R2, you can only have four swine.
I was just playing with different things. This is where you guys get it.
But that's what.
It's not to exceed.
Right.
I mean, and in certain situations, you probably do want it then not to exceed.
Okay.
But it doesn't work in every situation? No, it doesn't.
Can I ask, should beef cattle, dairy cattle, equine, sheep, and goats really be two animal units per acre?
Yes.
Okay. So beef, dairy cattle, equine, sheep, and goat should be two animal units per acre?
Well, no.
No.
No, what, there should be a simple table that allows two animal units per acre, period. In R1, R2, and R3.
Maybe even in R4, because it is based on carrying capacity, isn't it?
Well, I'm just looking, you know, you look at the carrying capacity, two per acre.
Why don't we simply say it's.
To break.
Right.
Well, now, no, okay, I'm sorry, I can, I'm shooting myself in the foot, I guess. But the idea of it being cleared acre for grazing animals means you're, it does make some sense. Hypothetically speaking, if someone had fifteen or twenty acres of fields and more than a hundred acres of woodland behind the field, the woodland really shouldn't be counted.
Right.
It shouldn't be, but.
It's still roaming range.
Well, I'm not even concerned about roaming range. Just the sheer.
And rabbits.
The farmer should know better than to do something that's dense.
Yeah.
I'm, you know.
Because that's what's still getting at the serious erosion problems and serious wildlife issues.
Well, that should have more sense, and yet.
Most don't.
No, it's not, no, it's the outlier, but there are, look. There is someone in town who has rather a specific breed of cattle, which I won't name because they would. A specific breed of cattle, a friend of mine bought one, bought a calf because these were supposedly kind of dwarfish pygmy cows. But it turns out that if you feed them adequately, they actually grow up to be full size.
So it wasn't a good pet, huh?
Not taking it into bed at night.
I can't get it out of my house, won't fit through the door.
But, no, but my point is, there are people who don't have sense, and you don't want to, you don't want to have a situation where someone has fifty acres of land, but only five of it is cleared, and they've got fifty acres of land with a hundred cows, right?
But then I would, I would, if we restrict it in the R2 and the R3, I think that's probably a good idea. In the R4, yeah, okay. But should we not also say in R2 and R3 that it's one per cleared acre?
Of course you should.
Okay.
I, that's where I was heading, is, and I don't understand why any of this stuff is allowed in R1, but.
Neither do I.
Well, okay, I take that back. Again, we have the hobby farm, where somebody, you know, they've got their three horses and.
But this is.
Where, you know, whatever her name is, has got forty chickens.
But this is specifically commercial. This has got nothing to do with the residential or the hobby farm or anything. This is strictly commercial.
Look, if she's got forty chickens, I guarantee you she's selling eggs.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I agree.
And that's what came up last time. So, but, so Ted, where does this alternate definition come in that you have on the first page, where you have the raising of animals commercial gain or personal use?
That was just, I think the question that came up the last time really quickly was, and the question in my mind was, if the impact of a large density of animals is a nuisance, does it matter whether they're doing it commercially or doing it for themselves? If you've got too small of a lot, let's say in the R1.
Yep, right, and you're trying to put six cows on it.
Six cows on it or whatever, and even if it's for your personal use, that's an impact.
It is an impact.
And the question is, are we going to, and the struggle always is, how far are we gonna stick our nose into your personal business on your land when you're not doing a commercial operation? into your personal business on your land when you're not doing a commercial operation in a residential district? I mean, how far do we go? Know there's a point when it becomes a nuisance to your neighbors or a danger to the environment.
I, 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 I would, I would argue that there's, there are some species that are different from others, because in, in a resi- the idea of having pigs in a residential district is just anathema to me. They, they.
That word? I wanna see that word in minutes, next time.
You wanna put it in more minutes? Sure.
Maybe if you've been stating before nine fifty-two.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. All right, guys, we, we, we are approaching ten o'clock, and we're all getting silly, especially me. I think we, I, I actually think we made great progress on the equestrian ordinance, and I, I, I think we did make some progress on this thing, but we're gonna have to keep talking about it. What is our deadline, Ted, time-wise, to get this stuff hammered out, final language, hold a public... When, when do we have to hold a pub- what's the last day we can hold a public hearing and still get the darn thing on, on the warrant?
End of April, isn't it?
End of April.
So, we don't have much time, we're gonna have to have additional meetings. We, we can get this done. We can, well, I think, I'll tell you, it's been a tough nut to crack. I mean, at first it seemed easy, and you're, you're seeing, this is not finished by, this is sort of like a whole bunch of.
You did a good job pulling all together like that.
Well, okay, but we're, we're, we're. Are, are we agreed that we're gonna get rid of the, the first version?
First table?
Yeah.
The first table is, doesn't, yeah, I think, I think we're all.
Well, I know where I. Let, 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 I'm pulling the board. Are, the, the.
Yeah.
Are, are, are we all okay with getting rid of that and going to this?
Well.
Animal unit equivalencies, so that, so that we can have, so somebody can have their mixed-use, you know, their, their farm with a couple of goats and a pig and, and whatever.
It's a good starting.
Just, just as long as, as we spell out, uh, what I do like about that, and some of the, the number of goats I could have. You know, someone might wanna know, how many goats can I have? So, I think we have to keep it simple. I, I, the problem with the current one we have is all about animal units, and who can figure that out that?
Well, I think if we take that table and we say goats are point one, so, so you put the table that says carried capacity is ten animal units.
Yeah, have, have both on.
That's how many you could have.
Right.
Yeah.
It gives you a range guide.
Yeah.
But, 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 but that, only if you have goats, and it is hard for a farmer to, to read something like this and understand that it, yeah, that you need to add up the, the animal. Yeah, it, it's easy enough, i- if, if you're allowed five, well, on a three-acre lot, you're allowed six animal units. So, I can have four thousand two horses. That, 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 that I can grasp, but when you go to somebody who's got horses, sheep, goats, cows, reindeer and chickens, then.
And guinea hens, it gets a little more confusing.
No, guinea hens, you, you prohibited guinea hens, which I've.
And the.
From what I hear, they're horrible creatures.
But, yeah.
I wonder if they're allowed my names. Because they don't do it just once.
We needed to, we needed to be able to get into that. I don't, I was just getting you.
So, from what I, I see, it's gonna be busy the next, next few meetings, maybe. We have a full agenda, and gentlemen, I will not be here on March twenty-second. I will be out for two weeks, so. I scheduled you for the twenty-ninth, hopefully I'll be back in order by then, but, um, so we might need to do an extra meeting. I think you're gonna have to do extra meetings, so we're running out of time.
Well, do we wanna change the date of the March twenty-second meeting? To the fifteenth?
There's a possibility that I may not be at the twenty-second.
If, if we did that, we wouldn't be able to get, uh, branch booked in next week. There's not enough time to advertise it.
Sure is.
Yeah, we could do it on the eighth.
No, no, we're, we're doing it on the. We're, we're doing them on the eighth.
Yeah, we are doing them on the eighth.
Oh, never mind, then I confused, I, I was thinking, I, I'm on the wrong date.
No, no, I, 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 I'm glad you brought it up, but no, we're, we're, we're fine, 'cause they're, we're, we're gonna, hopefully we're gonna have a public hearing to review their application and take action on it.
Right.
On March eighth.
Right.
Sure, no problem.
But, but do we want to... Okay, the downside of moving the meeting to the fifteenth is any application which we talked about on the eighth of March, we would be unable to have a public hearing until April.
I, I think, here, here's my, my thought on it. If we have to go to extra meetings, we have, we have our regular meeting, just to handle whatever applications come in. And then on that extra night that we have a meeting, we do nothing but ordinance.
I like that, yeah.
Because otherwise, we're gonna run out of time.
Yeah. And I will tell you right now, the only one that has a chance to be, um, close to meeting a public hearing is Motor. Because the other two, when you look at them, one is, well, Sylvain Terrio is going to, just for those who know, he wants to go across Gossmilbrook with.
Okay, I.
So, we have, we have, we have one that's a complete conceptual, one, one is where they're gonna request not doing a, a cluster. And, uh, the other one is gonna be looking for a final approval.
He wants to, he wants to go across Gosbrooke. Yeah. He looked at that years ago.
Yes.
How you remember walking across there?
It's, uh, you'll, you'll have to look at the application. Well, where, where on Conspel Creek? On Tunde Drive, which is just about, what, maybe about four hundred meters from, uh.
Yards.
From, uh.
Yeah, across the street from Mr. Mercios.
Yeah, thanks.
Down off from one. Mercios, farther down.
Putting it across will be a little expensive.
It's up, it's.
On Old Post Road.
It's an old bridge road, about maybe four hundred yards or so from the, uh, from the intersection with the law counter. It's just up there, it's, you'll find it on the right.
Yeah. He's gonna have to build a bridge to get across that.
It's a squash play.
Can, can I, uh, are, are we, we, we've moved on to other business?
That brings up, with or without you?
There, there is, that, that's fine. Well, I wanted, we wanted other business. There is one item of business which I just wanna inform the board. I, I, I was not at a meeting where the board expressed concern about some comments made by the town manager and wanted to bring the town manager into a meeting. And my personal, well, my, my feeling was that we should either have a public... If it was possible to have an executive session to have a conversation with the town manager, that was fine. If it was not possible to have an executive session, then we would, um, we, we either needed to have a, a, a public meeting or individual board members that could have come private conversations with the town manager. And Jens was, Jens, I talked about this nine days ago, maybe. He was supposed to look into the, um, legal aspects of, uh, executive session and come back to me with what, because he's, he's one that I think goes very strongly about having a conversation.
We had had that conversation, and I had asked Ted to set up an executive session, but I'm, I'm not exactly sure what happened, but the executive session didn't take place, and we talked about it and thought that we need the town manager to come to us, and us going to him one-on-one, he needs to come and so that we all hear the same message.
I think having executive session makes sense, because it is a personnel issue.
Yeah.
Um, I was basically told that, that, that really can't apply, you know?
Yeah, that, that, and, and that's, I'm, I'm sorry, that, that was, I... What I, what I, what I got, what, basically what I got was that we couldn't have an executive session. And to, to me, that, if, if, if the board wants to bring the town manager into a, into a public meeting and, and ask him to address the board, then we should talk about that and how, how we made that invitation. I'm, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to shut down anybody, I, I'm just, I, 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 I think that it's very important that executive sessions are of special privilege, they can only be used in certain circumstances, and, and they should not be...
Unfortunately, will we?
We, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have any fuzzy, there, there's no room for fuzzy gray lines when it comes to executives.
I personally feel comfortable, um, questioning the town manager over, like, a, a personal type of discretion in, in public, so.
I, I don't disagree with you, Tom, and I, 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 I would, if, if we were able to have an executive session, that's what I would like to do, but what I've been told, advised by staff, is that we can't. And, and so, what, one, one question that Jens was looking back, you know, was how many board members can be in a room at one time before we run into problems?
Three, right, and then it becomes a meeting.
You'd have, is it two or is, is it two is three? Okay. So, if, 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 if two groups of three were to sit down and.
No, it would have to be three groups of two, because the third person makes a meeting.
Okay, that, that's what I thought, and I'm, okay, we've been talking about it, sorry. Okay, so.
I'm not sure about that. I thought four was four.
No, I think Rich is correct, the under sunshine.
We need, we need four to vote on it, if the three people who make the meeting.
Okay, this, I'm sorry, this, this is one of the things that Jens was supposed to get back to me on, unless.
He's in Florida, isn't he?
If, if we can't meet an executive session, I just assume meet as a group, and if it's a meeting, it's a meeting. I, I, I really do think that it will be better if we all hear what the town manager has to say, and we hear what each other has to say in terms of the questions, so that we can avoid duplicating the effort.
And for him to make a statement like that, presuming he did, is, obviously, he's getting feedback from.
Yeah.
Somebody, or some people.
And we can have it before the regular meeting?
No, I do not want to do that. I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, Ted, Ted had suggested that we have a, a, a pre-meeting meeting without the video camera at town hall, and then our regular meeting at six, and then our regular meeting at seven. And that, that's, to me, that, that walks, talks and smells like an executive session.
I didn't say we wouldn't have a, a video camera.
Yes, you did.
Originally, I did, but this time, we can record it.
I'm, I'm curious, and I don't know the answer. Could we ask the Board of Selectmen to have an executive session, because we had issues with something that went on? We're not gonna call it, this, this would make it a personnel issue.
Because he does work for the, some Board of Selectmen.
And I, I don't know if we can do that, I don't have a clue.
Actually.
But it seems to me that that would be one way.
I love that idea.
If it were, yeah?
No, no, I, I, I love that idea for a variety of reasons.
Oh, yes.
I, I, that, 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 Machiavelli would be proud of you, that.
He's my hero, looking at that.
So, uh...
It, it just seems to me that would be one way, because if, I don't wanna embarrass the guy, because he may not have said anything.
Right.
You know, I don't trust Duke Harrington any further than I could throw him, at his weight, I couldn't throw him very far.
I don't care, Duke doesn't like me.
So, uh... What, what do the rest of you guys think? If, if we could persuade the Board of Selectmen to hold an executive session to, to which they invited both us and the town manager, if, if we can do that.
I can go on, Ted, but I have made what might be a, a simple, we are, I, I, I think I'm just looking for a statement from him, clarifying what, what that article was about. Which is more than willing to do, by the way. I, I don't need to get into accusing him or anything, just like.
I just wanna hear.
You know what?
What was going on.
Right.
It could be a public statement, but.
If he gives us a statement, I'm fine with that, I just wanna know what was going on.
Yeah. Maybe a good place to start.
Could be.
How, how, how do we do that in a way? Do, do, do we invite him to our next meeting and put it at the end of the agenda, and?
Well, I was gonna say I recommend if the chairman write in the weather asking him to explain.
Do we want him to explain it in writing, or do we want him to come talk to us?
I don't know, once, once he's here talking, then, then it's a, a public forum, and maybe that.
You'll need, you'll need to put it in writing and explain what it was that was going on and why he said what he said, if he said it.
If he said it at all.
And it wouldn't surprise me if he didn't.
Okay.
If he did, I'd like to know why.
Okay. If it's agreeable with the rest of the board, what I will do is I will meet with the town manager at, at his earliest convenience, and then, and, and talk it over with him, and, and then make the written request. I, I wanna be respectful, I don't wanna blindside a man, and I wanna make, make sure that we're, that, that he understands that what, what, what we are endeavoring to do is... Have, well, what we're trying to do is have the town be functional, um, and, um, just get it... Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
For everybody.
Okay. All right, let's do that.
Question.
Yes.
Are there any other?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question to turn out, we all probably got our lovely little letters.
I'm so sorry.
Is that rea- the reason is, that new appeal, or whatever you wanna call it, was produced because the first one didn't include the zoning board of appeals, and this one does?
I can't, I can't address the issue of, of motivation, but I can, I can, I can state that it is, um, is basically, uh, is an appeal based on prejudicial decision-making by all the parties involved, and that they, they acted outside of the, uh...
They acted in bad faith.
In bad faith, basically, yeah. It's, it's a reiteration of past.
But he's already, he's already sued us for that.
On, on, on the, on the public record, I, and I, I would like to lodge a formal complaint that I, I have not heard a single word from the attorney who is allegedly representing me, and I have been served, what, three times now? Uh, I have not heard anything, uh, other than getting a copy of one document, which is a whole bunch of legal garbage, uh, and I, I, I find that unacceptable. And I don't know if I, I would appreciate it if other board members would either say I'm out of bounds, or if they.
You're not out of bounds, I would just, I would just assume that she should go to the court and get a restraining order against him. This is turning into harassment.
Yeah, it is.
This is way past harassment.
Particularly the, the name Colin and everything else, I mean, uh, and, uh...
And, and for the record, I have not been served, he gave paperwork to my wife, he didn't give it to me. I haven't been served yet, and I'm standing by it.
By the way, the document, it refers to me by multiple names in different, in different places.
Yeah.
So, well, and, and, and so, I, I, I don't, I, I, I may have received.
Are you a split personality?
There, there may have been a document, and you're referred to by your nickname, not your legal name.
Name?
Yes.
Yeah.
In, in somebody, in some places you're referred to as James, in other places you're referred to as Jamie. Well, then. Well, that, that's not, that's, anyway, but, but, I'm sorry, sticking to the point, we, we were told that we were, we were being represented both, both as a board and and, and the town was taking care of us as individuals and I don't feel like, it, it, let me put it this way. In, in any circumstance where an attorney, I, I retained an attorney to represent me and I heard nothing but crickets for three months, they would have been fired long ago. So I, I, what, what, where?
I think she needs to.
Where, where, where do we go from here? I mean, I, I, I just.
What, even just the status of?
How long ago was it that you and I went to the Board of Selectmen? Was that in October? September? It was in October.
No, I think it was September and it may, it, it's been a long time.
I mean, it.
We were right here in the room, they had one of their meetings and asked them.
Yeah.
Well, no, there was, there was another, the other time, Rich, Rich and I sat over there and, and I.
The time I sat over there.
I read them a formal statement. Were you here too? Okay, I'm sorry. Um, and I'm sorry, my neck is really.
That's fine.
Totally walked out right now.
No, I think Marty and I went at a different time.
Yeah, I, I think you guys went, went, you guys went earlier and then you and I went and I, I read, I prepared remarks which were not received well by the Selectmen, but, um, and they apparently didn't understand because they hadn't been advised by town council. That, that they, they had not been informed of the, the actions and the, and the additional personal lawsuits. So they had no idea why you and I were so mad. And they thought we were being, you know, unreasonable and ornery and all things we're accused of being.
So how, how do we find out what's being done?
Well, I, I, I don't know, Mr. Planer, do, is this something that I need to, as chairman, I need to, individually? Do we address it to the town manager or the Board of Selectmen or where, 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 where do we go? Cause I certainly don't feel like I'm being represented.
I think that, uh, concerns should be expressed to the town manager. The town attorney is not, is out of, uh, out of town right now. I think, uh, be returning at the venue next week. But I think, uh, your, your protest and, and, uh, request, uh, should be lodged through the town manager.
Okay.
Now.
Do I have, do I have permission from the board members present to say that I'm speaking for all of us?
Yes.
Should I inquire on our behalf?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing is what, there was supposed to be another lawyer besides the town attorney to take the eight oh eight, which was an outside firm, which we were originally told.
Thank you for reminding me about that, Marty.
He's representing the Selectmen. The Selectmen are being represented by him, but not by us. We're being represented by the. Oh.
I know, I, I.
That's not how I.
The insurance company got a lawyer to represent the Selectmen, that's right.
I thought the insurance company was representing, I thought it was us too.
No, no, they aren't.
That's the way I understood it was.
Selectmen are being represented by the insurance company, not the planning board.
Why do the Selectmen have to be represented? Cause they're not even in the suit.
They are, they have been individually, um, uh, sued as well.
Not on the same, not on the same grounds as we were.
They're not on the same grounds.
Would, I, I, I'm.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm having a really hard time remaining professional about this because we, we, we were sued for taking action that we were required to take because of actions of the Board of Selectmen. And.
And they're being covered and represented by competent legal counsel?
Yeah, who?
Because originally, because.
And we're not.
Uh, because originally, if we were told.
I did not say that.
No, you didn't, but you thought it.
But originally, when we were told, there was the outside attorney who was gonna take care of that because the firm and everything else is being sued and they were getting their own.
Marty, I thought the exact same thing until this moment.
That's what we were told.
All of us.
No, no, we were, we were told that the Board of Selectmen were being covered by the town's insurance policy and that the town's insurance policy was paying the bare attorney and we were having to deal with the town's attorney. Cause I brought the whole issue up when I found out that, that we had the town attorney and not the insurance company. I said, well, how come? What's going on? That's the way, the insurance company wanted it that way.
Excuse me, but, but when we met, when we met in discussion, we were told different.
Yeah.
Upstairs in the, in the planner's office.
By Durwood.
Yes.
We were.
And that is where I'm getting my information from. And nobody has addressed anything to me since then.
Nor to me.
And he also told us that he was, they were doing a counter suit on, on harassment, that they, they were, that they were just doing frivolous claims and, and now we get this new one that's.
Well, we've been FOIA'd too.
It did mention.
There's also been a FOIA as well.
Which we have not been informed of, Tad.
Because you're not in the FOIA. The town is in the FOIA, but the planning board is not.
Okay, sorry.
It's actually CBA that's been FOIA'd and the town.
It was mentioned in the, the brief, which is very hard to say when you discuss language a lawyer uses. But in the brief that she wrote, it did mention that she wanted sanctions because it was harassment, because they're, they're after us all the time. I'm sorry, what the Dickens is the matter with the judicial system that allows us to go on for, for six or eight months? And you can't get the very first item resolved.
And I, I don't know about you guys, but it, 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 it is beyond embarrassing to have the sheriff come to my house four times now.
To my, my work two days ago.
Uh, yeah, this is, this is unacceptable.
Yeah.
I asked for whoever was bringing coffee to me.
I agree, at some, at some point.
It is harassment and, and they, they, they're, they're doing the right thing on their behalf, the, the, the planners, that, that. Yeah, I'm, I'm of the mind, maybe just like resigning, like it's not worth it. And is that, is that what they want?
It won't go away.
I guess it won't, but still, I don't feel like I'm being, um, represented or, or recognized for all the work that we do for the town. You know, some of the.
No, instead we're mullied in the press.
Ends up in the press.
Right, right, and that, that was wrong. That's what pissed me off.
Gentlemen, I think that these kind of discussions do not want in the public forum because they are legal matters and should be done outside of the public forum.
You say we can't talk with all cameras, so.
Who, who else do we talk to? We don't have a lawyer representing us.
I, I think the chairman, the chairman is, the chairman is, uh, is going to address that. Maybe the, maybe the other members of the board could, could competently help like it, but, but I'm not sure this is the forum.
You're probably right. Mr. Gannon, can I, can you make yourself available this time of year? Not really, okay.
I'm four weeks out before I can.
That, that's fine.
What, what day would you be doing it?
I don't know.
What are you looking to do?
Just meet with the town manager? To talk about these two issues?
This could be very good for executive session.
But we could, Barney, you have to understand there are various.
With the, with the Selectmen.
With the Selectmen, I understand.
And that's, that is legitimate.
And, and legal, legal counsel is another, that.
That is.
Personnel and legal issues are two of the four or five things that can be done in an executive session.
You get, you get us an executive session with the Board of Selectmen and I would cancel whatever appointment I have. I would just call them up and say, I'm not gonna be there.
Roger that, okay.
You're just gonna leave a date.
Alright, gentlemen and ladies are ready to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Uh, hold it, yeah, anything else here? You guys have to sign this, uh, Gary's Auto Salvage, we never, we never signed that. We have to sign stuff? We got a whole bunch of stuff, we're gonna sign anything up. I'm sorry, my dyslexia is kicking in. I'll pull my pen away, I'm gonna go join Lahoo.
I'm sorry, what?
I have a pencil. Sorry. I have, I only got some pencils. Anybody who loves Gary, Gary's Auto Salvage.
Camera off.